We'll bring this meeting to order. Is there any need to amend the agenda?
I have a request to pull a few items from the consent calendar for discussion.
Okay. And what would those items be?
15A3, 15C1, 15C2, 15D1, and 15D2.
One, two, three, four. Okay, those five items, 15A3, 15C1, 15C2, 15D1, 15D2 will be pulled. Any other? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Votas follows, trustee Fredericks?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
And trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Okay. And we will be going to closed session where we'll be discussing public employee discipline in conference with legal item, legal counsel. Motion, I entertain the motion to go to closed session.
Motion to go to closed session. Second?
President.
Read before. I got one item to read before closed session. The district has received a threat of litigation from community members residing next to Foothill Technology High School regarding the construction and placement of solar panel arrays on Foothill's campus.
Thank you. Votas follows, trustee Fredericks?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
And trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, good afternoon and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you, President Calvin Peterson.
Here.
Vice President James Borsay.
Present.
Trustee Sabrina Rodriguez.
Here.
Trustee Shannon Fredericks.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Jerry Danenberg is absent this evening. Superintendent Dr. Antonio Castro.
Here.
Student Board Member Lizzie Okubo.
Here.
Student Board Member Santana Schnizler.
Here.
And Student Board Member Kane Bolante.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing to report in closed session. Next we'll go to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Peterson. On the screen, some information will be displayed shortly. So meanwhile, I'll start to share some gratitude awards for the months of June, July, and August. As we typically do, we highlight three. So the first is Jordan Taylor, Health Technician. We're proud to recognize Jordan Taylor for her exceptional dedication to VUSD students. She coordinates healthcare needs for ELOP, Extended School Year, and Summer Session. She coordinates after-school field trips, ensures students have the medications they need, and supports staff trainings with our district nurses. Jordan is organized, dependable, and brings a contagious smile to our work every day. And we are truly grateful for her commitment to our students and health services team. The next individual to be recognized is Joe Martinez, Custodian at Anicapa. We'd like to recognize Joe Martinez for his consistent support and positive attitude. He goes out of his way to make sure his duties, as well as all additional meetings and events, run smoothly, always with a smile and willingness to help. We truly appreciate his hard work and dedication. And our last individual is Hayden Opperly, one of our Technology Specialists. We're proud to recognize Hayden for his positive attitude and outstanding support. At the start of the school year, he responded quickly to countless requests, going above and beyond to ensure staff had the help that they needed. Hayden's professionalism, strong work ethic, and can-do spirit made him an invaluable part of our team, and Mound considers themselves fortunate to have him supporting their campus. So if you would, please join me in showing our support for these individuals. Thank you. Thank you, President Peterson.
Okay, thank you. And now we're on to Student Boards' Report. Lizzie?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. I feel so honored to be able to represent El Camino High School as a student board member. Next slide, please. My name is Lizzie Okubo, and I'm a Senior El Camino, as well as ASB President, and I'm very excited to share with you all all the wonderful things that are going on at our campus. To start, we are entering the school year full with 224 students. To those of you who aren't familiar with El Camino, this might seem like a small number, but with the eight teachers that we currently have on campus, 225 students is actually max capacity. From what I know, our waitlist is also growing, so it's really nice to hear that students are interested in our program and are curious about the unique opportunities that we have to offer. Because El Camino High School is an independent study school, it's a great program for students who want to balance their passions outside of school, such as sports or robotics, but still want to get ahead academically by gaining transferable college credits at Ventura College. For student achievement, El Camino's Leadership Cabinet has actively assumed their roles and is now working hard to foster a fun learning environment. We hope to do this by planning events that will build strong connections between students. As I mentioned before, I will be serving as ASB President, Karina as Vice President, Ashley as Secretary, Sophie in Communications for Social Media, and Malik in Communications for Print Media. This is a very strong group of students, and I can't wait to see all the fun things that we'll accomplish for our school community. For building culture and climate, this year our focus is not only on academic success, but also on creating a welcoming environment where every student feels supported and connected. One of the ways we've already done this was through our freshman and new student orientation. At this event, we welcomed our incoming students with a tour of both El Camino High School and Ventura College. I know from personal experience that Ventura College's campus can feel very overwhelming in the beginning, so the goal of this tour was to help students feel comfortable navigating both their dual enrollment campus and their school campus, and therefore eager to start classes. Students also had the chance to meet with their counselors, which gave them important resources to help them succeed right from the start. Upperclassmen also shared survival tips for success, such as how to manage your time wisely, where the best study spots are at B.C., and my personal favorite, where the food trucks are parked. Overall, this was a great way for students to connect with and meet each other. Our upcoming events include Back to School Night, which will be a fun social event for parents, Picture Day, which is on the same day as our Western-themed Quad Day titled Cowboys and Classmates. I think this will be a very exciting event for students to hang out and participate in fun activities such as horseshoes and bandana making. This is also on the This is also on the same day as our Club Fair, and we're anticipating to see some really cool clubs this year. This is the last slide, so on behalf of El Camino, I would like to thank you for your time and for your continued support. I'm very grateful for this amazing opportunity that is allowing me to speak here today, and I'm very excited to continue working with you all. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Santana.
Good evening. My name is Santana Schnizler, and I am honored to serve as ASB President at Foothill Tech this year. I'm excited to share with you what Foothill has been working on as we launch into the 25-26 school year. Next slide, please. Our school theme this year is Chasing the Stars. This theme represents our belief that every dragon has the ability to reach higher, push beyond limits, and shine bright. We want all of our students to chase their stars this year. Over the summer and into the start of the school year, our ASB team worked hard in training, getting to know one another as leaders, learning how to manage our weekly business meetings, preparing to run successful events, and completing the INVOLV training to help us better serve all of our students. In our Executive Cabinet this year, we have Erica as Vice President, Naomi as Senior Class President, Sienna as Senior Class Vice President, and Ruby as ASB Historian. Next slide, please. On the first day of school, our ASB students arrived at 7:00 A.M. to decorate the entire campus. We filled the school with banners, posters, balloons, streamers, stars, vibrant colors, and set out a red carpet so that students would feel welcome the moment they walked through the gates. This early morning effort was, from ASB, showed teamwork, pride, and spirit from our student leaders, and it created an environment where every student could feel a part of our community. Next slide, please. Right after the first day, we jumped into Welcome Week, where we hosted our first water balloon toss of the year. This is a Foothill tradition that always brings laughter, excitement, and connection among our students. This was a way for our Dragons to build friendships and start the year feeling connected. This week supports the Board's priority of culture and climate, creating a positive and inclusive school environment that students look forward to being a part of. Next slide, please. One of our highlights early this year was a wellness center activity called the Find Your Trusted Adult Scavenger Hunt, where students were able to identify their trusted adults on campus. It was a fun and engaging event, but it also had a purpose, reminding students that they have people they can turn to for help, guidance, and encouragement. Next slide, please. Our First Connection Week of the year ran from September 2nd to September 5th. On Tuesday, students came to school cozy for Pyjama Day, and we showed movies during lunch. On Wednesday, it was Class Colors Day, where each grade was able to proudly represent their class colors. Fresh Dragons wore purple, sophomores in blue, juniors in black, and seniors in silver, gray, gold, or yellow. We also encouraged positive affirmations and making wishes on stars during lunch. Thursday was Cosmic Twin Day, which included a spin-the-wheel activity with prizes like temporary tattoos, body glitter, candy, and bracelets. And on Friday, we wrapped up with Dress Like a Star Day, where we were able to channel our favorite celebrities or dress in sparkly gold and silver. We had very special appearances from T. Swift, Adam Sandler, and Harry Styles, and so many more. Our very own mascot, Fuego, even handed out Otter Pops at lunch. This entire week ties to the Board's priorities of culture and climate because it promoted unity, creativity, and school spirit while giving every dragon a chance to participate. This fall, our student athletes already have been working hard, competing with dedication, and representing Foothill with pride. Foothill's Featured Athlete of the Week was Albert Lau of Water Polo, scoring five goals against Thousand Oaks High School. Our athletic program connects to the Board's priority of building on VUSD strengths because sports are one of the areas at Foothill where students demonstrate teamwork, leadership, and resilience, both in and out of games. Next slide. One of the spaces on campus we're especially proud of is our Game Room. It was started last year by a Foothill graduate, Josh Gelman, and has now entered its second year of operation. The Game Room gives students a safe, positive place to relax, play games, and build friendships during lunch. Next slide. Another tradition unique to Foothill is our presentations. These are special presentations for our fresh Dragons who attend with their fire classes. Through presentations, students learn mostly everything they need to know about Foothill, the resources available, the opportunities they can take advantage of, and introductions to our staff. This directly supports the Board Priority of Student Achievement because it ensures equitable access for information and resources for every dragon to succeed on campus. Next slide, please. As we look ahead, we are excited about several upcoming events, including trunk-or-treat, our Halloween dance, the Fall REN Rally, and Back to School Night on September 18th. That is all for Foothill. Thank you so much for your time and support. We are committed to making this year one where we continue to chase the stars together. Go Dragons!
Santana, this is Sabrina Rodriguez. So I've been on the Board for nine years, and you are now my favorite Foothill representative because we have never had Fuego here before. That was fantastic, but I kept getting distracted by him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Board President Peterson, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Castro. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name, next slide, please. My name is Kane Belante. I'm a student at VACE. I am in the Pharmacy Technician Program. I decided to go down this path of healthcare because when I was 14, I was diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. And when I was diagnosed, I decided that it would be the best option for me to help others who are getting these diagnoses and help out my community. Next slide, please. Tonight, I am delighted to present an overview of the remarkable achievements and the initiatives that have taken place at VACE. Our dedicated instructors and students have been at the forefront of fostering educational excellence and community engagement while supporting the Board of Education through the 2025 through 2026 year. Next slide, please. Accreditation. At the end of July, VACE had a visitation from the WASC and the COE accreditation teams. Accreditation went well. VACE is still awaiting notice from the accreditation from COE, but WASC has already recommended a six-year accreditation with all fields marked as exceeding expectations. Thank you. Next slide, please. Next, our English and citizenship classes have begun for the 25 and 26 year. Enrollment and attendance is slightly down from last year, but not significantly. Next slide, please. This academic year, we are excited to share that VACE has completed 11 high school and equivalency graduates so far, and the year has only just begun. Congratulations, graduates. Next slide, please. Next, we have VACE's caregiving class. I'm actually a part of this. I'm actually the one who took this picture. VACE's Fall 2025 Caregiving Class began Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. This large class of 62 enthusiastic students are eager to learn, strengthen their English skills, and build a strong foundation in caregiving while discovering how to help others navigate the healthcare world. Next slide, please. For upcoming events, VACE is holding the Career Expo. VACE is hosting a Career Expo as a joint endeavor with the Workforce Development Board of Ventura County and EDD. Check it out October 23rd, 2025, from 2:30 P.M. to 5:30 P.M. At 5200 Valentine Road in Ventura. Next slide, please. Since the last VSUD meeting, there has been several VACE career technical education graduates who have secured employment in the medical, IT, or CAD. We extend our congratulations and best wishes to all VACE graduates who are now gainfully employed. Lastly, we have our Student of the Month, Cheyenne Ranhal. Join us in celebrating in August's Student of the Month, Cheyenne. A dedicated student in our 700-hour Back Office Medical Assistant CTE Program, Cheyenne exemplifies resilience, professionalism, and positivity. As a proud mother of four, including a baby born just five months ago, she balances demands of full-time studies and motherhood with grace. Despite a long commute from Fillmore, Cheyenne arrives on time, in uniform, and ready to excel. Her unwavering determination, outstanding attitude, and perseverance inspire her classmates and reflect the values of VACE: hard work, growth, and overcoming challenges. Cheyenne is a true model and shining example of success. Congrats, Cheyenne. That is going to be it from VACE. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity.
Wonderful job, thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. So last year, I couldn't decide on when I wanted to make this announcement. This year, I'm going to give the students Board Members a choice. After this, we're going to have public comment. You can leave and get your homework done right now. You can wait, listen to public comment, and then leave. So I'll give you the choice. And Mary Ann's going to read our civility statement now.
Thank you. Good evening. You will have three minutes to speak this evening. I will give you a 30-second warning, and the timer will indicate when time is up. Before we begin, we would like to remind everyone that the Governing Board recognizes the impact that civility has in the effective operation of the district, including its role in creating a safe and positive school climate. The Board believes that everyone should be treated with dignity and respect in their interactions within the school community. The Board does understand that the First Amendment provides strong protection for speech. However, the Board also expects that all speech, expression, and action will follow the norms of civil behavior on district grounds and in meetings. Please remember, we have students attending our meetings and watching, so please keep language as respectful as possible. Please also note that the microphone at the podium has been calibrated. Just speak right on in, and it will be turned on for you. We have a number of general comments this evening. So first up will be Marilyn Cook, followed by Randy Cook.
Instead of "South," they cast a shadow midday on our yard and our fruit trees, which need full sun. You have taken away our right to privacy, as we never know when someone will be cleaning or repairing these canopies. And they can see right into our sliding doors to our bedroom and our family room. I feel uncomfortable now even changing my clothes in my own bedroom. You started this project by cutting down the trees behind a property. The trees and the back wall were put in 26 years ago by the Ventura Unified School District, per agreement with the residents, so it would help aesthetically to block the view of the school and help blend it into the residential neighborhood. When our neighbor asked solar reps if these arrays could be moved to the front of the school, the statement was that they could ask, but aesthetically... Then there was complete silence. Again, your project started on June 13th. We were never notified, and you didn't apply for your notice of exemption until the second week of July, after the metal structures for the arrays were already built. This allows for the residents to file a lawsuit challenging the project and its illegality. Because of the late filing, we have 180 days to file a lawsuit, which we don't want to do. We don't want to do this unless we absolutely have to. We want to remedy this with the school. Over 16,800 people read our online posts, and all but three who commented were supportive of the residents, mainly because you had better alternative areas of placement. Why would VUSD choose Engie, a company who has the worst ratings, a 1.1 for over 1,550 reviews that I read? Did Engie suggest the approved architect? If this is a school who puts the safety of our children first, why did the submitted plans not show the overhead electrical wires or the existing trees on our personal properties that are within 10 feet? My understanding is that by law, California fire codes cannot be exempted, especially by a school that's full of children. You can build next to our property, but there has to be 10-foot clearance from vegetation, which there is not.
30 seconds.
And the block wall is not a firewall. Also, the turnaround for the fire truck is smaller than it should be by law. I want you to know that I do not agree to lower this 20-foot array to 14 feet. Either lower it below the block wall, or put it in front of the school, or build it parallel to the south-facing arrays, which is what it should have been done in the first place. Thank you.
As I call your name this evening, if you can make your way to the podium and just make a line there, as we have a number of people this evening. Next up, Randy Cook, followed by Fatima, followed by Wendy Van Horn.
Assistant Superintendent of VUSD visited our homes with suggested propositions of solution to the change of the present solar canopies at Foothill Technology. Lowering the canopy six feet and adding a fence on top of the block fence is really not agreeable. It would look horrible. An agreeable solution is to place the canopies on the north side of the school or the front of the school. The whole procedure of erecting the canopies was never presented to the neighbors on Taloma until construction started. If the neighbors had been properly notified, solutions of the location could have been determined to the satisfaction of the school board and the Taloma neighbors. We have received many comments. I'd like to just read three of the comments that we received in support of us. First one, "We cannot believe this was done. Basically, they have ruined the quality of life that you have had in your own backyard." And that's not even taking to account the effect of your home evaluation. The second one, "This is an utter..." Blankety-blank. I can't use the word they used. "They should have informed you what they were proposing to do so you could go before the council and make your case. This is unreal. What they did is criminal. I would be ticked off." I can't use the word they used. The third one is, "On a scale of 1 to 10, I would rate both VUSD and the council a zero. I do not believe any of you would like to see the solar canopies looming over while in your backyards. They're atrocious looking at them. You did not even consider the effect this would have on your neighbors. Looking from the street, you cannot really see the effect of the horrible sight. I have invited all of you here, to my backyard, and to see for yourself what this really looks like." Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Fatima Najib. I'm one of the school bus drivers with Ventura Unified. A few years back, the district offered us... A few years back, the district offered us the opportunity to augment our route hours, which were like five and six hours a day, to up to eight hours with doing grounds work. I currently work grounds at our facility on Crooked Palm, and my mindset is to make it as beautiful and as inviting as I can, so that it reflects the professional attitude of all of the professional drivers, mechanics, and dispatchers, and our manager. Anytime you come to the Crooked Palm facility, I hope that it will look presenting. And I pull weeds, I rake up leaves, I water plants, I do cobweb hunts, whatever it takes to make it look presentable. One of the benefits of being able to do these eight hours is that I get free insurance through the district. This is huge for me. It allows me to do my preventive maintenance on me on a yearly basis. Before I had this, I couldn't do that. I couldn't afford it. In doing so, my optometrist was able to note your prescription is getting stronger and stronger. You are gradually losing your vision. I asked, "With my current trajectory, how long do I have?" He said, "About a year." If I didn't do some type of surgical intervention. I went home, I cried, I prayed, I cried some more, I prayed some more, and then
Thirty seconds.
I did research. And in so doing, I made the decision to have bilateral cataract surgery that restored my vision. Thank you. This is because I have insurance. I didn't have to worry about the cost.
Next up is Wendy Van Horn, followed by Patrick Van Horn, followed by Linda Bergfeld.
Meeting school board members and Ventura Unified staff. My name is Wendy Van Horn, and I live at 115 Taloma Drive on the backside of Foothill High School. And I'm here to ask you to support the Ventura Unified staff, who are working hard to find a solution to the nightmarish placement of the solar panels at Foothill High School. Everyone, including the staff who have seen the view from the backyards of our properties on Taloma Drive, are horrified. A twenty-foot-tall structure looms over our backyards like something out of a science fiction movie. This massive project was installed by Ventura Unified with no notice to the neighbors and with no opportunity for input. The good news is, you have the opportunity to right these wrongs. I ask you to require the solar contractor to find alternative locations for the panels at the Foothill site. That is possible. And please, support your staff who are working hard on this issue and empower them to demand creative solutions. I know there will be a financial impact to move the panels, and perhaps aesthetic compromises will have to be made at the school site, and I appreciate those concerns. But currently, the Taloma Drive neighbors are bearing one hundred percent of the financial burden and the aesthetic impact of this project. The school district is going to reap the benefits of the solar panels for years and years to come. It seems only fair that you should bear the burden of the impact. Thank you.
Up next is Patrick Van Horn, followed by Linda Bergfeld, followed by Nathan Trammell.
Patrick Van Horn, I live at 115 Taloma Drive. Wendy and I have lived there for thirty-two years. And as an aside, Santana, and this is to all of you, those are great presentations, and I really learned a lot. And Santana, I am really glad you and your classmates are on the other side of the wall behind our house. Awesome presentation. I want to reemphasize to you two and reiterate an open invitation to come to any of our homes and take a look at what the panels look like. Thirty-two years ago, when we were looking at the property, which is now our home to buy, we saw that there was an abandoned avocado orchard behind it, and we wondered what was going to happen with that property. We were told it was school property. We contacted the school board, and we said, "What are you going to put there?" And they said, "Well, we're going to put a school there and probably a high school." And we thought at the time, probably increase our property values. We supported that idea. We thought it was a great idea. With these panels, five feet from the wall that separates our property and soaring twenty feet into the air, you have decreased our property values, all of us. Come to our homes, take a look. Please work with us to find a solution. We're not against solar, not at all. But we'd like to make these panels go to a better location, and we'd like to work with you on that. Perhaps in front of the school, facing Day Road. That will fit right in with the name of the school, Foothill Technology High School. It'll show it off. But please work with us, keep us in the loop. We appreciated the meeting with Ryan and Dr. Merza last week. We'd like to continue that dialogue until we can find out how to make this better. Thank you very much.
Linda Bergfeld, followed by Nathan Trammell, followed by Frank Maciel.
Good evening. Talk about a little divergent conversation here. I'm Linda Bergfeld, and I'm a teacher at Ventura High School, teaching AP Computer Science this year. And I have the honor of also being the math TOSA for part of my assignment. As I am also the VUE treasurer and exec board member, and I am in my twenty-second year at VUSD, and my last, I will also quickly add that I spent twenty years in technology software implementation prior to becoming a teacher, and most of that career was spent doing implementations and large-scale data conversions. As everyone knows, we are in the throes of implementing ARES. It's kind of a bad word right now on some people, which is our new comprehensive student information system. While the start of the new year has been a wild ride, I am personally happy with the data conversion and the speed that we are getting our questions answered. Kudos to our technology department, the TOSAs, and the support staff, because I am very empathetic to the intensity of working long hours, the critical software, the human component, and just dealing with stressed admin, teachers, counselors, and staff. And this brings me to my actual point, which is highlighting to the district personnel and to our school board that we need better support from ARES on the site level. The fact that our high schools in particular did not have a dedicated ARES support person on the site to train our counselors and our teachers before the students arrived the first day is, in my personal, professional opinion, a huge failure on their part. I did attend training last year, and without real data, though, it's really hard to remember all the clicks, and there are a lot of clicks in this system. I played with ARES sandboxes over the summer, but again, without real data, it was difficult to connect the dots, and I actually know what I'm doing. At the beginning of the school year, I attended one training session, my first and last, because it was run by an ARES trainer that was quickly, made me feel that there was a little condensation, there was attitude, and their ability to actually demonstrate simple things I felt were not worth my time. So at that point, I decided we were basically on our own and keeping our heads above water until the start of the school year. We are beginning to enter grades, and progress reports are due next week. I have concerns. I have friends that have concerns across all the district, across all high schools. And I'm requesting and recommending that each site get a direct access to an ARES support person for training and troubleshooting as we continue down this path, so that our staff can be confident and successful with this implementation.
Thirty seconds. Up next is Nathan, followed by Frank, followed by Erin O'Kelly.
Nathan Trammell. I work as a school bus driver. When people find out I'm a school bus driver, they say, "You got to be crazy to be a school bus driver." I say, "It's not a requirement. The kids will train you." But, you know, we really appreciate the work we do here and also what you guys provide for us. I actually wrote down some articles for you based on some case studies from Harvard and other prestigious organizations for the board members. But we benefit from well pay, you know? Just like there was a case study that talks about Costco and Sam Club. Costco always was staffed, and their turnover rate was very, very low. And so they were saving a lot of money on training and what have you, but Sam Club's was always looking for workers, because they weren't paying well, they didn't have the benefits. And that's what you're benefiting right now by giving us this eight hours and these benefits. I have three kids and one on the way, and I drive an hour to get here, hour and a half to get home because of traffic. But I really appreciate the eight hours and the benefits I get, so I could provide for my family.
Up next is Frank, followed by Erin, followed by Noel Urias.
Hi, I'm Frank. I've been here a couple times. First two were negative. I'm going to try to do a positive one this time, so. I just wanted to say hi. I have been doing some research. There was a survey that was released by the Associated Press that looked into transportation, specifically throughout the nation. And there's just a couple of stats I wanted to go over with you all, just like the major bullet points. Eighty-three percent of school administrators respondents report that their staff in their school takes time away to help with transportation. Thirty-five percent of parents have missed work due to child transportation needs for school. Forty-four percent of school administrators respondents report that the number of students who qualify for free transportation in their school has increased in the last five years, and forty-five percent expect for it to increase over the next five years. I just want to say, this is one problem you don't have. I think you guys are ahead of the curve. You guys have talked about how you want to prioritize transportation. I just want to thank you for that. And just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea, transportation, for everyone who's here, who came here? And out of everyone who's here, who actually came from another company? I just want to raise your hands. It's because you offered that. That's what brought everyone here. And everyone here, you didn't have to train. We all had our bus certificates. We came here because of that. I just want to thank you for extending that out, and it worked. This is the best we've ever been staffed, and we're prepared for it, and we're ready to do whatever you need from us. So thank you so much.
Erin, followed by Noel, followed by Eric Delgado.
Hey, my name is Erin. I'm a school bus driver here amongst all the other ones here. I've held my license here since 2003. I started off here as a, God, really young person, transporting all our students. At that point, we were doing the four hours a day, split shift. If you guys have ever had a split shift before, it's no fun. Being a school bus driver, they were trying to shove us into doing cafeteria work. A couple of us here did cafeteria work. But then we started, you guys started this banking schedule thing, and we couldn't do that anymore. So, and then sometimes we would fight over five-hour routes. At that point, I got pregnant, I had kids. It wouldn't sustain me being here. So I ended up going to another company for another ten years, enjoying my job, but going, "God, I just wish I was back." Because the district having PERS, having, you know, all that stuff, all the benefits of being here was amazing, and I was just like, "Oh, I really miss that." And then a couple of, you guys, you guys did the eight-hour thing. You guys finally approved that, and we were able to get benefits, and I was like, "Yes." And a couple of people came over, and we all came over. But it's really impacted my life a lot since you guys have done this, and it's been amazing. I couldn't sustain it here with having the little hours. So I just want to thank you guys so much for the four hours. And I know a lot of us here are here in support of that, and we just wanted all to come to say thank you so much. I know things are going on with the district money-wise and stuff like that, but we really appreciate it. All the kids that we transport, I see a couple of them around here. And like today, I spent three hours, two hours, on the 405 and the 101 today, taking kids to a museum, seeing the Skirball Museum for the first time. Amazing time for Cabrillo. You know, we've taken kids everywhere. I mean, we've, gosh, three, four-hour trips on the 405 still, because it's the 405, going to the Peterson Automotive Museum to take these kids there, and they're so excited to go do these things. And going through the streets of LA with JoJo, and we're following along, going after each other. But to be able to do that for these kids and get them to places that they've never been has been amazing. So I just want to say thank you, guys. Yeah, couldn't do it without you guys, so thank you very much.
Noel, followed by Eric, followed by Michael Davis.
Hi, my name is Noel. I'm a school bus driver. I just started my second year here at Ventura Unified, and right now, I'm driving the kids to and from the Boswell School. It's a continuation school for our special ed graduates to learn life skills. Pretty cool. Anyway, I came from Durham School Services in Oxnard, where I learned to drive the bus. And while it was a good place to work, after eight and a half years, it was time to move on to bigger and better. You see, a few of our friends came here just over two years ago, and they really liked it. And they kept telling us to come over and how great it was. We heard some other friends were making the move, so I finally decided to make the move as well, and I convinced two of my girlfriends to come with me. And now, little by little, more and more of our coworkers have migrated over. There are now over twenty of us here from Durham. We came for better pay, we came for better benefits, and we came for better hours. So far, so good. At Durham, we had a huge gap of time off between drop-offs and pickups. Here, we have the opportunity to supplement our hours, working with the grounds crews between our runs. So we stay busy throughout the day. And while I never thought I'd be doing all these extra chores, I'm grateful for it. So you may be seeing us around your schools, picking up trash in the quads, raking leaves around the campus, trimming hedges, and filling gopher holes in your fields. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of lots of us bus drivers, we are happier here, and we are happy to be here. Thank you.
Eric Delgado, followed by Michael, followed by John Gustafson.
Hi, I'm Eric, also a school bus driver coming here from Durham. And also thankful for the eight hours. You know, to complete my eight hours, I do grounds work at Buena High School, fun picking up trash, trimming bushes, weeds, and all that. And it has helped me a lot. So yeah, just hopefully you have, you know, helped that for more years to come. So, yeah, thank you.
Michael, followed by John.
Good evening. My name is Michael Davis, and I work for the VUSD warehouse. Whenever I meet fellow district employees, they usually are very surprised that we have a warehouse. I guess that's because people don't really think about where they get their paper, their pencils, their food. But we're here, and we're doing a lot of work. It's never boring, it's never slow. There's no downtime during the year, and we try really hard to keep everything going. We do feel appreciated by those who depend on us daily, kitchens, offices, and most departments. But people, as I said, most people don't even realize we're here, delivering books, food, office supplies, purchased items, mail, as well as the custodial supplies. I could spend hours trying to inform you about all the responsibilities that we have at the warehouse, but having such a demanding position has always given me a peace of mind knowing that my position was pretty secure. People would always need us at the warehouse. This last year, we don't feel that anymore. It's like something's coming, and we can't stop it. I no longer have that feeling, okay? I'd like to say that when speeches are made thanking different departments for their contribution to the Ventura Unified School District, the warehouse is never mentioned. Thank you for your listen.
Our last public comment for general comment is John Gustafson.
Hi, guys. All right, so I'm Johnny from the shop. I was going to start, I was going to start this with a joke, and I practiced it on some of my coworkers. And then the joke was so funny that HR called me and wanted to hear it for themselves. Yeah, so I'm not telling it. That's a joke. So, as you could tell by all of our drivers here, most of them wanted to talk and tell you all how great it is that they've got the benefits that have been provided by VUSD. And we're very thankful for that. We're also worried about, I mean, we know you guys didn't get as much money back as you wanted last year. So we're worried. We're all worried. Now, I got to apologize to you guys. I said to be here-
I said to be here at 6:30, it should have been 6:00. So, those of you who weren't able to talk, that's on me. Nobody else, that's my fault. So, I'm going to say this for you. Thank you all very much for allowing us the full-time positions so that way we could get the benefits that, quite frankly, with the job that we do, we deserve. It is not easy to maintain a license as a school bus driver in California. We have to be retested every two years. We have to go in for a physical constantly. Your blood pressure, for example, mine's probably skyrocketing right now. Your blood pressure has to be below 130 in order to get a year, or two years, excuse me, two years medical. Otherwise, you have to keep going back and back and back. Anyway, so we are very thankful for what you guys have approved and allowed us to do. Thank you very much. I'll yield my time.
President Peterson, that's all of the public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And students, you also, you can leave now, or you can also stay for the whole duration of the meeting. It's up to you, but we'll give you time. Okay, now we're on to, wow, this is a hot mic today. We're on to action items, educational services.
Thank you very much, President Peterson. Once again, I think this is probably our fourth straight time bringing before you some additions for our supplemental text adoption campaign that has been going on for the past at least five or six years. These two are fast-track items. And if you recall, fast-track items are books that are on the California Department of Education's list, and it can be fast-tracked without a full read by the committee. So, these, at least one of them will probably be a title that's familiar to you. So, once again, thank you to all of our teachers and administrators and parents who are on that committee for their work. Pleased to bring these before you for your consideration.
Any questions? Are you entertain a motion?
Move to approve the books listed.
I'll second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Okay, our next item is human resources approval provisional interim permits, which are called PIPs, and waivers, first read.
Good evening. This is for a particularly hard-to-fill position. It is a science-credentialed staff member who, because they're serving an RTWI program, or a dual-language program at Anacapa, also requires a B-clad. And so, this candidate is working to complete those requirements. And so, it's here for your consideration this evening.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Okay, next is business services, consideration of resolution 25 through 21, appointment of Measure E, Citizens Oversight Committee members and alternates.
Okay, thank you, President Peterson. Before our ad hoc committee reports on their recommendations, I just wanted to share with the board that the resolution that's attached to this item in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th, whereas the resolution indicates that the board wishes to appoint five persons to the bond oversight committee for two years. Although that is permissible, the bylaws permit for more than that. And so, should the ad hoc committee choose to appoint more individuals, all we would need is an amendment to the resolution to go along with the recommendations.
So, are you asking for a motion to approve the nu, the number? Or should we just dive in?
We, we, if, should that, should, after the recommendation and discussion, should that end up being necessary, then we would take it at that time, yes.
And so, if you've looked at the applications, all but one of the applicants are, stated that they would be able to make the meetings. The one applicant who has a work conflict, we felt like wasn't probably a good fit for us this time. It's somebody who has served in the past on the committee. But just because of some scheduling changes, it doesn't seem like it's a good fit. So, our recommendation was to, to move forward, everyone with the exception of Dave Armstrong, who is the one who has the scheduling conflict. And do you guys have questions?
Well, I would just add furthermore, this also fulfills that we meet every one of the categories for different public groups that need to be belong, that need to belong in the committee, so.
I have no questions. So, the, would the approval need to come from one of us, since you guys were lacking, or does it doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't matter. So, before we, I make the recommendation, I did want to just say, I really appreciated that we had so many members of the public who stepped forward. This is obviously a really important thing, the Measure E Oversight Committee. We meet pretty regularly, they make big, you know, they make no formal decisions, but they do provide a lot of oversight to the community, and that's really of great value to the district. So, with that, I will move approval of the recommended list.
Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
And just as a point of clarification, Anthony, just want to make sure the motion was for seven. Should we also just be explicit that those motions included an adjustment to the resolution?
So, the motion that was given was to increase the amount of applicants or appointees from five to seven? Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, number two is adoption of resolution 25 through 19, establishing the 2025-26 GAN appropriations limit, first read.
Right, good evening, board. So, this is an annual requirement as part of our unaudited actuels. We have to bring forth a resolution that's called the GAN Resolution, a GAN Limit that was created back in 1979. It's essentially a state spending cap on how much of our revenue from state and local taxes we are allowed to spend in any given particular year. It was created by California voters back in 1979 to keep government spending from growing too quickly. So, for Ventura Unified School District, this does not mean we lose any of our funding. We still receive all of our state aid and our local revenues. It only controls how much of these dollars we can spend towards day-to-day operations in a given year. So, it doesn't mean we have to give the money back. It's just, it's setting an annual limit, and that's essentially what this resolution is doing.
So, I had two questions. First of all, I just want to clarify, so if we, well, let me go back. Do we usually stay under our cap?
Yes, it's not normal that districts such as ours, that's not basic aid, go over the limit because our, a lot of our LCFF funding is majority of it is state aid.
And then, if for some reason we did hit our limit, you said it would not be taken back, so would we just roll it over to the following year?
Yes, yes, exactly.
And I wanted to thank you very much for your additional input on that. That one was just hitting me right in the brain the other night. I appreciate all your extra information. I was trying to wrap my brain around that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is just a perfect example of like how we complicate things, right? Like unnecessarily in government. But now, having gotten that off my chest, I will happily make the motion to approve it.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Next, we have our 2024-2025 unaudited actuels financial report.
All right, good evening, board. I'll be presenting to you tonight on our 24-25 unaudited actuels. And so, just to step back for a little bit, the unaudited actuels, what it is, is really our financial books are closing for the fiscal year. The last time I came to the board to present, something was at the adopted budget. And with the adopted budget, there was a section called the estimated actuels. So, at that time, we had all the data of expenses and revenues up till April. And so, there was still a few months left before the actual fiscal year closed for us, which is at June 30th. And so, now, September 15th is our deadline to prepare what we call is our unaudited actuels. So, all year-end closing entries are posted. Any allocations that were unspent have been identified or either assigned to a fund balance as appropriated. All revenues have been accounted for, all expenses, invoices that we needed to account for, either by reaching out to specific vendors that didn't submit their bills to us by June 30th. We had July, August, September, three months of still contacting these people to correctly report that expense in the accurate fiscal year. So, all of that has occurred. And why you would see projections different than expected, you know, we budget conservatively so during the process, and miscalculating or underestimating it occurs. I mean, we, we don't always have the data as you could, it's normal for an uptick in expenditures towards the end of the years because, I mean, in a perfect world, we would want all of our invoices billed, that payments that we owe, or revenue that's owed to us, exactly on a month-to-month basis, but that just doesn't occur. And a lot of time, it's the fiscal team at, towards the end of the fiscal year, that's hounding either vendors or county office, city folks to be like, hey, you haven't billed us for the entire year. Where are you with the bills? And so, and then there's also revenue that is received that was not anticipated, or expenditure allocations that do not align with budgeted allocations. So, what I mean by that is throughout the year, when we're doing first interim, second interim, estimated actuels, we have the ability to increase or decrease the expenditure budgets or the revenue budgets based on the trends that we're seeing at that time, based on, you know, historical data, or like the amount of information we have at that certain time. And so, for example, estimated actuels, we have data up till April. And if, you know, so for example, like if we didn't see any expenses hit the books until at April, there may have been a chance that we went in there and be like, oh, we haven't seen any expenses. It's already April, we got three months left. There may not be any expenditures or invoices out there. We could go in there, and we have the ability to zero out the budget, or adjust it upwards or downwards, to project where we're going to be towards the end of the fiscal year. And so, where we are right now in that timeline is at the bottom of it, estimated actuels. We've passed that at budget adoption. And so, we are in September presenting that audit actuels. And what happens is, we put together the unaudited actuels report, and in December, our auditor would come and audit our unaudited actuels to see if what we're reporting is accurate or not. So, you'll have another check, check and balances we're talking about. You'll have another check in December when our auditor comes to report to see, did we accurately close the books? Were we off, or was everything handled correctly? And then we'll start the entire cycle again. At December, you'll also see first interim. So, what that means is our unaudited actuels at the end, it's really, it's not a tool for MYP, it's not a tool for like the three-year projections. It really tells you how accurate we were at the adopted budget when projecting our beginning balance or not, right? So, at, so for instance, at adopted budget, we had all the, all the data up till April, right? And so, we projected out till December. And so, if we estimated a $2.7 million net income, now we could see actually, okay, we projected adopted budget, 2.7 million. Where did we actually land? Were we $100,000 off, or $1 million off? And then why? So, how this impacts the first interim is, when we go through the presentation and I let you know what, where our ending balance was, what we projected to where it actually landed, we would have to go adjust the beginning balance at first interim, either upwards or downwards accordingly.
Asan, sorry, I just want to ask, so you just said that this isn't really something that like ties to the MYP, but that, that doesn't make sense to me. Because at the end of the day, like all of our budgets are connected. So, can you explain?
Yeah, so what I meant by that is, this presentation would not have an MYP. Like, this is not meant to be like, here's our three-year projection. But yes, you're absolutely correct. How it ties into the MYP is the beginning balance. So, if we were off $1 million and at estimated actual adopted budget, if I told you that our beginning balance would be like 3 million, and it comes in at 2 million net income, then that would swing our beginning balance, which would then impact the multiple, multiple-year projections. But at this presentation today, we are not presenting an MYP for you. Yeah. Okay. So, key takeaways, so at the close of the fiscal year, the district's annual net income came in at $2.3 million. So, that is how we, when we ended up closing all of our books, accounting for all the revenues, expenses, contributions, everything, our net income was $2.3 million. That's $407,000 less than what we thought it would be at estimated actuels or budget adoption. So, at budget adoption, we projected ourselves to end at 2.7 million net income. We ended up at a 2.3 million. So, overall, I would have to adjust the beginning balance at first interim, $400,000 down. And so, yeah, it would, it would impact our beginning balance of $27.1 billion, $1 million downward about $407,000. And that would occur at our next interim, which is first interim, which would be in December. At the same time, you'll hear about, the same time the auditor is coming to present, if they finish in time. And so, wanted to kind of give you, set the tone, like our budget is about 252 million plus. And so, our budget fluctuates in the millions, and it's not like 100,000, 200,000 is not. But I, I can't say it's budgeted because it's still dollars, but our variances are normally in the million swings. But overall, I mean, $407,000, I think, you know, what that could tell you is, we were quite accurate. I mean, if you're looking at a $252 million budget, 407,000, we were off by 407,000. That's less than a half, a fraction of a percent.
Where do you want questions? Do you want us to wait till the very end?
Anytime.
Any, anytime, anytime.
So, I, I have questions. I'm sure you're not surprised. But I think in general, like, the, the difference in like, say, the local revenue having higher-than-expected interest payments, that's not surprising, right? Interest rates are strong, we always budget conservatively. It's not surprising that those outperformed our expectations. But on some of, and, and like, I appreciated the explanation about Medica and Healthy Campus and that, those bumps. I am, I, I have concerns about the expenditure side of things. And so, do you want, do you want me to wait until we get to that part?
Yeah, let's start, we'll start with the revenues, and then, you know, kind of, so the next several slides are going to be explaining the differences, right? Even though we made, we started off letting you know, even though there's differences in revenues and expenditures, we weren't exact in our budgeting, right? There's, there were some swings. Overall, at the end of the day, we were off about $400,000 in our ending fund balance. And so, now, the next several slides, we will start with the revenue, kind of go over where we thought we would be at estimated actual, where we landed. And then we'll go into what trustee Rodriguez is concerned about, the expenditures, and talk about where the major swings were. And so, so let's, so LCFF funds decreased due our, due to our final LCAP-based grant, updates revised from P2. So, we were off about $65,000 on our LCFF funding. Federal revenue was, our final allocations came in $68,000 less than what was budgeted. Our major swings in the revenue, which is in the right direction, right? The state revenues increased by 1.6 million due to the Healthy Campus Grant that we received earlier. That's just due to the Health Services Team completing several milestones and reports, and submitting them to the county office. These funds sit at the county office, and as we complete the little milestones, they would send us the revenue, but at the same time, send us invoices. And we weren't expecting that in fiscal year '24, '25, any of that would occur. So, it's a good thing that we got revenue. In the later couple of slides, you'll see the, they also sent us invoice to pay, they sent us the invoices, and they sent us the revenue to pay for those. So, it kind of washes out on that end. revenue to pay for those, so it kind of washes out on that end. Local revenue, interest came in higher, and the district received about 200 more in Medi-Cal billing than was budgeted. So now, on-
Sorry, okay, so you're expecting, you weren't expecting a 1.6 this year?
I wasn't expecting in that fiscal year.
Okay.
We knew that, we knew that, you know, Greg and his team were working on the Healthy Campus Grant, but we didn't know the timing of when the revenue would land in the books, along with the expenses.
Did you factor that into the overall budget?
No, so that's what I mean, what I mean, we didn't expect it, meaning, we didn't budget for it.
Yeah.
So, that's why it's such a large swing, because if I would have budgeted for $1 million to arrive in Healthy Campus revenue this fiscal year, then it wouldn't, we wouldn't have that revenue, because it would be a line item that would account for-
Then the variance would be different, it would be much more, okay, understood.
But to your point previously, it was budgeted in our MYP for the three years, so we're really just shifting it from, essentially, '25, '26 to '24, '25.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, moving on to the expenditures, this is where it gets interesting, let's see here. So, we have, here's where we thought we would land, on the left-hand side, '24, '25 estimated actual expenses, and where we actually landed, so for certificated salaries and classified salaries, certificated, we were off by 386,000, the expenses came in higher, I would say, more, it came in higher than what we projected it to be at, and classified salaries, about 638,000. Next several slides will have explanations of the major pots of where these variances landed, and so, then you have supplies is another one that we were under, where we thought, which is a good thing, the expenditures came in about 1.2 million dollars less than what we thought. Services, on the other hand, were about $3.7 million more than where we thought we would be. And then, capital outlay was about $429,000. So, all in all, the expenditures, where we projected them to land, was 271 million, and where they landed was about 274, so it was about $3.3 million more in expenditures than where we projected to be at.
So, I know you're going to go into the individual pots of money on the next few slides, but, I guess, I'm trying to stay organized, sorry, and I'm not feeling well, so it's harder. You mentioned that we'll be getting the audit later, and I just wanted to be clear, like, the audit doesn't really look at how things were budgeted, it really just is assuring that, like, money wasn't misappropriated.
The accounting, yeah, they check all the accounting aspects of it, so if we're properly recording the journal entries, if we're, they'll take a sample of all of our, like, so they'll look at our, so July 1st, our new fiscal year starts, so they'll sample, like, the first 150 or 200 random expenditures, to see if any of those expenses were supposed to be in June 30th or not, because that's what really happens, right? Once July 1st hits, you're still receiving at the accounting office expenditures from previous, for fiscal year, and so they'll go through that, and then, whatever else they'll do, I know Joey has a lot more detail, but they go into specific programs and see if we're charging Title I expenses correctly, or whatnot.
Right, so, and I, I think, there's kind of two separate things, right, like, because I don't, I mean, I just want to be super clear, there's no feeling, I don't think among any of us, that there's anything inappropriate, right? Like, we, I have questions about the budget, but it's not because I question, like, what you, or Joey, or the team are doing in terms of managing funds, like, that is never, has never been a concern for me. But I do have questions about some of these things, because, as I shared with you, like, you know, we agonized for months and months, right, during the spring of this year, over, you know, positions that were $200,000 in their cumulative cost of the district. And so, then, to be at a place where, where 3.35 million dollars over our anticipated expenditures is concerning, right? And I appreciate that there's, we're going to get some additional information from the other slides, but as a whole, I think we want to understand how we get here, right? Because it, it doesn't, it doesn't feel nice, as a board member, to, to make those hard decisions, and then to see that, like, through no decision on our part, we're over budget, right, like, which is going to mean more cuts later. So, I just want to be clear, but that's not me thinking that you or Joey are not doing a good job at your job.
Perfect.
I'll just add there that, thank you for the comments about the distinctions between the audit and the assumptions that go into the budget, and so, I absolutely recognize that the questions that you have, really are going to be, as we go through and look at these annual expenditures and the differences and the variances, how that influences the budgeting that we have, and just as Hassan already said, what are some of the assumptions that we can make, like, immediately in the first interim? So, absolutely, all of the, the feedback that you have is good for us to hear.
So, the immediate impact would be, your beginning balance would be about $400,000 less than what we thought it would be, but still, does, definitely does have an impact of 400,000, 400,000 is $400,000 either way. So, and it's not the direction we want it to be, right? So, it's not like, it's 400,000 more than what we thought, it's 400,000 less than what we thought, so yeah, that would be the immediate impact, but, okay, so-
Before you leave this slide, I just had a question on this one. I appreciate that it was broken down into the different levels, but that was kind of more like, which department?
Yeah.
Did we see this? It wasn't so much the why, like, the analysis that, piece that we talk about, and, like, the perpetual teacher, I'm, you know, not here to say anyone did anything wrong, but, again, we're going to continue perpetuating these inaccuracies if we don't have the analysis in order to figure out where they were. So, I do appreciate, I know, I don't know if you plan on sharing the additional data-
Yeah, so we did some additional analysis, so, so here's the, for certificated, the variances were the sub-costs, right? So, we have, actual expenses came in, specifically, the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, for the use of subs, came in higher than what we had budgeted. Gina, non, oh, actually, this would be a Gina question, we did do some analysis in digging further into, like, the top reasons of why, like, sub-usage, what, what was the people, what were people calling out for? What are some trends? What are some specific months that you see higher rate of absences and the use of subs? So, I'll let Gina kind of talk to that.
Yes, so, the top five reasons over the course of last year, that we had certificated absences, number one was for illness, number two was for personal necessity leave, which is, also comes out of their sick days, and that's a max of 10 days per year. And then, number three was long-term medical leave, number four was district business or school-site meeting, and then number five was parental leave. And then, for certificated, for the top three months of absence rates, the highest rate of absence was in the month of May, the second highest was the month of April, and the third was the month of January.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, so the, when you say high school, middle school, elementary school, of the 247 and the 74,000, is the 400,000 is all substitutes, and is that-
Yeah.
That's all, that's all related to substitution? Okay.
I think beyond just the five categories, I mean, and several of us, we know, we, we press those buttons too, when we call in a sub, but, I mean, sometimes there's more to it, like, are we incurring, you know, perhaps more subs on, like, in-service days? And if that's the case, you know, how are we soliciting input from staff about what topics we want covered, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not incurring, like, more on in-service days and stuff? I mean, that's the kind of analysis that I'm, I'm looking for, it's just, not so much like, well, this many people were sick, these many people had to take, you know, personal leave for a dentist appointment, but, I mean, like, actually looking at, at trends. And we know things, like, I know that we've made the changes to calendar, which are fabulous for student attendance, but, I mean, I think that might be, like, places where there's oddities in the calendar. I know, like, this year, Veterans Day comes on a Tuesday, and, you know, so that creates an oddity in the calendar. So, I mean, just looking at projections for things like that, we don't always know what's coming until it hits, but then we can use that foresight in following years.
Thank you, we can definitely look at those, you know, unique aspects of the calendar. I will note that if there are absences on a in-service day, then there's no substitute costs associated with that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Real quick, so, site leave, so that's coming here for like, a training, essentially. Okay, so, yeah, it'd be, it'd be helpful to have a little bit more analysis on that, just to kind of figure out, because we're-
Yeah, so, let me interject, because we also need the classified data too. We wanted to share, just real quickly, kind of an interesting alignment between certificated and classified absences, and then, and then I'll come back and talk about where some of the additional analysis that we can provide, yeah. So, Andrea, if you would.
Okay, so, for classified, the top reasons for absences, our top reason was, or the use of subs, was to cover vacancies. That was a big, that was our top category. The top classifications that we've been needing to cover with substitutes are para 2 and para 1, which doesn't really come as a surprise. Food and nutrition, employee ones, campus supervision, and custodians, those were our top five areas in which we needed to cover vacancies with subs. And then-
Actually, I have a question about that.
Okay.
How does, how does that create more money? So, if you have a vacancy, and let's say it's $50,000 a year, right? Okay, and then you use a sub for $47,000 a year, that would only be like, do you budget and take the money out for the vacancy, and also take the money out for the sub, so it creates a false-
Okay, yeah, but we are so glad you asked this question. You, you are absolutely 100% correct, which is why we wanted to just take some time to talk about, first, the similarities between certificated and classified, but then, what the budgetary implications are. So, the first, the answer to your first question is, let's, let's stick with classified personnel. You're, you're absolutely right, there is no extra cost being accrued, because there's a vacancy, there isn't someone in that role, so the cost that's being accrued is for the cost of the sub. The distinction here, I think going to the broader question about how we budget, we can absolutely change our assumptions about what that will look like, because remember, the variance that Hassan is focusing on this slide, is specifically about what we, what we budgeted for substitute costs. So, that, that's what we're focusing on, the cost of substitutes, not the cost of these other positions. So, to answer your second question, could we shift that? Absolutely. So, we could take this data, increase what we believe are the, what could be the cost for, in this calendar year, or this fiscal year, for the cost of substitutes. We could be wrong, but we could increase that, and then we could also potentially keep our estimated costs for employees, all, for all the positions, including the vacancies. But then, at the end of the year, or along the way, then potentially, the, the problem could be exacerbated, because you've budgeted more for substitutes, while also keeping the same budget for all the positions, or, we could do the reverse, we could reduce the, the budget for some of the classified positions, increase the amount for substitute pay, and then see, how close were we in estimating? So, just as a reminder, this variance that we're focusing on is specific to substitute costs.
But, I just want to push back, because when we look at the classified salaries expenditures, we are over budget by $638,000. So, if what you just said were reflected here, we would see that, that position that was left vacant, we didn't actually spend that money, and instead, we paid for a sub, so the overall cost would be less, and that, and that wouldn't, we wouldn't have spent extra.
Yes and no, because then, when we talk about contracted costs, especially in special education, you have an interactive effect between all of these things. Substitutes, contracted services, current position, so, you could have positions that we have hired on the books, someone has filled that position, they're out, they need a sub, and then, in other instances, same thing, we fill that position, they're out, we can't get a sub, so then we have to increase contracted services, because it's a mandatory service. So, there will be an interactive effect. All of that is to say, just in terms of this variance, I just wanted to answer the central question, which I heard you asking, which is, can we budget differently? And the answer is yes, we can budget differently.
But these are actuals.
Yeah, these are actuals. And also, wouldn't the specialized contracted services be under services, not under staff?
Yes, yes, so, let me walk through, I think we're getting lost here, let me walk through-
Well, let me, let me round out what I'm saying, so, right, last year, we're in budget cuts, right? And let's just say, like, we already said, we don't think you guys are doing anything nefarious with the money, but, when you come out with a report like this, and say that you, it looks like we spent $400,000 more, right? We let go of somebody making 60,000, and 70,000, and 40,000, it, it, it looks horrible, right? Because the, the layperson is not going to say, oh, but you know, that's because they budgeted for actually salaries and the substitute. So, I think we need to make it clear, especially coming off of a year we did last year, we really need to make the numbers clear of actually what's going on for the public, because, when I'm looking at it, I'm like, you know, when you said it, we probably all thought the same thing, it's like, how is that possible? So, I think we just need to make it clear for the public that we're not letting people go that made $65,000 a year, and then overspending $400,000, because my question would be, then, where did the $400,000 come from? Right? That's, that would be my question, as a person in the public, so, we just want to make it clear.
And that would be my question as a board member as well, right? Like, I, I, I feel like this explanation doesn't, it is not clear for me.
Absolutely, because we're, we have a lot more information to share, so first of all, the, this, President Peterson, your comment about, whatever feedback the board has for us, to make it clear, obviously, for the board, but also for the public, we will absolutely do. At the very end of that, my comments were more, were probably more broad than what you're asking, is that at the very end of that, we will sit at the end of next year, this time, and go over very similar things, and we will still see variances. And so, that's, that was really my point, we can, we can adjust the budgets, and we probably will adjust the budgets, but in a budget, in a, in a budget our size, it was a 252 million, there are going to be variances, that, that is just a fact. And the variances, we're pleased, even though there, as you said, President Peterson, people could be ill at ease with, with the amount that's 400,000, in a budget our size, to be off that much is generally a good thing, would I have liked it to be 400,000 the other way? Absolutely. But we would all, we would expect that there, there are going to be variances, and we want to be as close to what we budgeted as possible, and that's, and that's what we aspire to do.
Okay, with that said, let me, I haven't said anything yet about classified variances, so, I know Andrea was saying, Dr. Castro was saying stuff, but, so, yeah, classified salaries came in 638,000 higher than what we budgeted at, some of the reasons, that expanded learning program, the ELOP program, which is categorical funds, we were off on the budget, so they buy about $126,000 based on para educator cost, right? We didn't get that right. Transportation salaries, we did not budget properly, we, I know we ended up hiring additional people to take over the special education route, but, one thing is, knowing what the person is going to start, the, you know, the salary is going to be, or, or what we budget for, so if we budget at, I don't know, step two for the person to come in, and after classified goes through their process, they hire them at a step five, step six, you're going to have a slight variance there. That goes for the health services salaries as well. Health services, which is specifically health techs, that, that was the cost of subs, along with custodian and grounds, right? So, when we're talking about the cost of substitutes, not all of the variance is made up due to sub-costs, right? Some of it is due to just not having the proper salary amount budgeted for, as we hire people, or as people leave the district, and so, yeah, like, going back to what Dr. Castro was saying, is it going to be perfect ever? I don't, I don't, I don't think so, I'm not going to give you that illusion that we could get a budget exactly to the point, the fact that it is only $400,000 off, which is a fraction of a percent, if you look at our overall budget, is great, so what I'm trying to do in this presentation is, go into those variances, and explain to you where we were off at the budget, right? What was the major reasons and categories that we could improve on budgeting-wise? So, what I would take away from this is, going back and looking at our adopted budget going forward at first interim, I'm going to need to look at our sub-costs. What is our annual sub-cost in our '25, '26 budget, if the end of the fiscal year, we ended up a total sub-cost across the district 3.11%? If the end of the fiscal year, we ended up a total sub cost across the district 3.3 million, what do I have budgeted for this coming year? Is it 2.5 million, is it 2.8 million? At that point, at first interim, I would be able to increase the budget accordingly to track with where we're headed.
So, I'm sorry.
I was literally sitting on my hands so I wouldn't push my button, but then I couldn't help myself. I, I have a hard time with us talking about the difference being $400,000 because the difference is 3.35 million, right? So it's not, it's not the four, the difference, the ultimate impact on our budget is $400,000. But where we overspent is 3.35 million. And that is really, that's, that's what we're looking at, right? Is why did we spend 3.35 million more than what we, what we believed in April we were going to be closing the books with? And so, I, I mean, I can appreciate that there are some things, like the healthy campus, that's revenue and expenditures or ELOP where frankly, I don't even pay attention to it because they have their own money and it doesn't impact us. Like, I mean, I do pay attention to it, but I shouldn't say those things out loud, right? But like, it doesn't impact the general fund, so I pay less attention to it. But the other things where it definitely impacts our general fund balance, it's, that is not a $400,000 difference, right? So that's why I just felt like we had to be really clear. Because when we say, oh, it's only $400,000, like, it's not, it's 3.35.
It's three, no, it's 400,000 net income at the end of the day, your adjustment for your... Yes, I understand what you're saying as far as the variances being off 3 million here, but on the revenue side, you're up 2.6 million. So there is a net. When you're looking at financials and we're looking at our adopted budget, how this would impact us is only $400,000.
Yeah, and I'll just bring that part of a conversation to a close. We have the same concerns, right? We have the same concerns about making sure that our budget is as accurate as possible. And this is why we're, we're going line by line through that. And if there are things that by the time we get through the presentation or afterward that we, that you feel that you don't have the answers to, we'll get them to you. Because we, we want the budget to be as accurate as possible. Again, I just want to state that it doesn't matter which budget, which school district budget you look at. At the end of the day, regardless of how we budget, I shouldn't say regardless, even as well as one, as an LEA can budget, there will be variances. And that's, that was my point, yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, one of my biggest concerns is, so we let people from custodian and grounds, we had to let some of those positions go, right? So how do we let those positions go and spend $195,000 on substitutes? I don't, I, that, like, if I'm reading this and I'm sitting at home and I used to work on grounds, I'm super upset.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. We, we talked about that. I will, first, I'm going to go to Gina to talk about certificated, even though the question is about classified. Before I hand it over to her, there in all of these things, as just again, acknowledging that people can feel upset, that if we were sitting across the dinner table from them, we would say, there is a cost of doing business. The, part of the benefits that come with being an employee and the rights of employees are to be able to, to take sick days, to be able to take care of themselves. Part of the, the rights that they come with is getting professional development. So there are, there is a cost of doing business embedded within what we do. And just in, very similar to, at the end of the day, we will continue to budget as well as we can, and there will be variances. At the end of the day, we will do everything we can to project what these expenditures are. But part of these expenditures will always be substitutes, and, and that's how it is. Gina, can you share like some of the additional detail, if you would?
Sure. So, well, employees in general, but I'll stop, talk specifically about certificated because there are some variances. And then I'll have Andrea share about classified. But so for certificated employees, they get sick days. They're entitled to those 10 sick days a year. They get those and they can use them as needed. And so we can't, we have contract language that guides when and how they use them, but the district can never take those away. They roll over every year. There's a lot of rules and regulations per ed code, other state laws. In addition, we have contract language that ties to days, how we use days. We bargain different days that we use for additional training or planning time for certificated staff, especially as tied to certain initiatives that we have throughout the district. So that's another impact that will always impact substitutes and substitute costs. And then we have different laws, like family leave acts and different parental leave acts that, that staff are entitled to. And so there's just a variety of different leaves that regardless of any of our decisions we make that are at the state and/or federal level that determine how we give leaves for bereavement, illness, long-term illness, child rearing, and all of those costs. And it's difficult to anticipate, you know? Some years, we have a lot of employees who are taking leaves for, you know, like a family leave act. Those things are sometimes not known at the start of the school year. So we wouldn't know when employees are going to have that need and when they, when they're going to actually use those days because oftentimes those are unplanned or unexpected, or just unknown. So I'll let Andrea add anything for classified.
Yeah, because I think classified was the issue because Andrea was saying that it's because of vacancies that many of our sub days were incurred. So that's, I think, kind of...
That was, that's what, when you say vacancy, and then you have the over expenditure, that's was what prompted the questions. Like, we definitely understand that you can't control if someone gets sick or if someone goes out on a leave. But if vacancies was the main reason, how did we reduce staff? And vacancies is our main reason for overspending?
So I think that, that's, that statement that was made is, was not correct. So in the custodian classification out of the entire fiscal year, one of the ma, major reasons here, you have 7,000 hours used for vacation. And that would cause us to use a sub while we're paying the individual to be on vacation. You have different reasons here. You have five-plus days sick, you have bereavement, you have comp time, you have illness, jury duty, long-term medical. I mean, we have the data that lets us know by month how many hours, for what reason, what classification is causing us these increasing costs, so...
How many vacancies did you have in the custodial and grounds?
As, as Andrea's looking at the vacancies, I do want to come back to, maybe I didn't do a good job of explaining it. When we have, let's focus on classified vacancies, and let's just say it's a para, a para two. So we have a para two vacancy. I want to, I want to go back and be clear. We are not accruing an additional cost there because that position is vacant. So we're not paying an employee, and then they're out for some of the reasons that were just listed, and then backfilling that position with a substitute. In that case, the cost that's being accrued and accumulated is for substitutes, not for a substitute and what it would have cost when, if there were someone in that position taking advantage of these required elements of leave. And I just wanted to also come back to that. The, many if not all of the, the reasons for the substitutes, these are things that we, one, contractually couldn't keep an employee taking advantage of. Also, when it comes to vacation, they have a right to vacation. And so I just want to reiterate that there are elements of these costs that at the end of every year, we absolutely will, we will, we will have to not, not only acknowledge, but also plan for. And that's, coming back to the budget, what we're trying to do is to use this analysis then to make sure that we are budgeting to the best of our ability. Andrea?
So just a few things that I, I wanted to add. Similarly to certificated, in addition to us covering vacancies with subs, it's the day-to-day absences due to sick leave that, where we're seeing most of the sub usage, personal necessity leave and vacation time. Those three categories outweigh the subs needed to cover vacancies. And then again, as Gina was saying, you know, we have contract language and rights to take the leave time, vacation time, and that kind of thing.
Oh, did you want...
I just want to reiterate, you know, as, the reason why we're kind of quibbing over this is because we have, you know, a shortfall in the next three years. So we need to really focus on pinching our pennies and really kind of focusing on this data specifically, just to give us a better idea of where we can have savings.
Absolutely.
How does this compare to prior years, like, for these things?
So our overall sub cost, so '22, '23, we're at 3.3 million total sub cost for the entire district. '23, '24, we're at 3.6 million, and this year, we're right around 3.3 million again. So overall, the district has decreased from the previous fiscal year. And so, yeah, so that indicates to me that, look, we've had three years of data where we are at really a little bit over 3 point million, $3 million every single year for sub costs. We decreased a little bit from 3.6 to 2 point, or 3.3, but we need to go back and look at our budget and see, do we have at least 3.5 million covered in the budget for sub costs? So that way, as we get closer and closer, well, it's just the beginning of the fiscal year for '25, '26, but as we get closer and closer to doing first interim, second interim, making adjustments, we would be more accurate in having a budgeted line item. So it wouldn't be such a large swing in the variances.
And, and then when we're doing like the interim, the first interim, the second interim, are we looking at actuals for things like subs? Because was, did all of these just come in in the last two months of the year?
So we look at, so at first interim, we would have, you know, three months worth of expenses that occurred. And then we have like prior three, four fiscal years of, of data, right? The actual, like, here's a full year of sub costs for '24, '25, '22, '23. So we could, and then we would have, what is our current sub cost for the year-to-date from first day of school to the cutoff for first interim, which is like, it's due December 15? So we would probably have actuals up till October, right? So you have like three months of data that you're looking at. So you could do a trend line and be like, okay, did this, did all the sub... How much sub cost do we have currently as of October? You know, do a trend analysis, do, you know, annualize that and see, okay, do I need to increase or decrease the budget? Is it right on? Is it aligned with our three-year trend of 3.6 million? Are we headed, so like, at first interim, if I, if I only have like $500,000 of sub cost, we would have to make a decision internally, like, okay, how high do I want to budget this for? Do I want to add in a budget just based on last year's expenses? Or did something happen in this previous fiscal year, such as like, I don't know, we had educator effectiveness one-time dollars that caused our sub cost to be higher because we had teachers going out on professional development, and that money is no longer available this year? Is anything going to change? Are we still offering that professional development? Hopefully not, because we don't have the money to do so.
Also, we have a level of specificity for one year that we can share, which actually gets to the point of what you said about the when we know. So Gina, if you can go back through, I think there was alignment on this between classified and certificated, but about like where, like which months the absences, like the, the, the sub costs go up because of absence?
Because that's where I'm coming, just so you know, that's my point of view. My point of view is that in, what, two months or three months? We spent $195,000 more because you would have adjusted it to the last actual, right? And then that's, that's the reason why I'm looking at this number as standing out really loud because I'm looking at, this is three months that we didn't know what was going to happen, that we spent $200,000 on subs. So if I'm wrong, let me know, because that's my confusion.
No, I mean, that's what we deal with, exactly what you're saying, President Peterson, is those are the, the costs that we see in the last three months. And so even though we, the books, the fiscal year ends at June 30th, we still have three months of working time to try to capture all the expenses in the proper month. That means looking at previous months or looking at, and from timesheets or invoices that we're receiving and making sure they're all paid correctly and the proper account code or whatnot. But we do see a huge uptick in expenditures towards the end of the fiscal year, whether that be when we get into contracted services in the next couple of slides, us not receiving billing for like half of the year. And we're like, okay, we know that you owe us. Can you send us the bill this year before we close? And so that's some of the challenges that we have. But that, that's, it's nothing new. It's something that we deal with every single year.
To the question, both certificated and classified had the same highest three months of absence. And the highest month of absence was in May for both classified and certificated. The second highest was April, and then the third highest was January. So we, so to your point, Trustee Peterson, April and May were the two highest months. And so that would have been something that would have been potentially unexpected or unavailable data because we don't pull the data until the next month for the absences.
It seems like we need a, a feedback loop, right? Because if we are seeing that, you know, there's all the reasons that people take absences that they're legally entitled to, that we have no control over, right? I'm not suggesting we tell people, you can't have maternity leave because, you know, we're over budget. But, but there are lots of optional things that we, that we support that if we are finding that come March, you know, we're over budget, is there a feedback loop to say to staff and principals, hey, you know what? Like, we're at our max. It, it should only be, you know, necessary things at this point.
Because what, before you answer that, it may be different in education. But almost every other businesses around the world have blackout dates. They have high tendency rates where they say, listen, you're going to have to go a little extra if you're going to take off between this month and this month because this is critical to our business or it's critical to our budget. So like, I'm not speaking educational terms because I, you know, I always know that. But every company does that, right? And you have to be having really good reasons in certain days why you need to be off. And maternity leave would absolutely be one of them. But I'm just saying that, you know, it always can't be a free-for-all on certain months because then we can't run the schools.
So we did negotiate recently some changes in our language because we did note that there were higher rates of absence prior to holidays. And so we did just this last negotiation session, work with VEA to negotiate some different parameters for a personal necessity leave that they cannot be, those days cannot be used to extend a holiday so that we don't have those spikes in sub requests for those days. And because, you know, it impacts student learning, obviously.
Yeah, but that, nothing permits them from not using a sick day, calling in sick that day either, right? So I can't use a vacation day, but I could, I could get develop a fever that day. And legally, you can't ask me for a doctor's note for three days, so there you go.
Trustee, to be honest with Asana.
All right, putting aside that, Andrea, if you can come over to the, join the conversation about how we can shape employee behavior while honoring the contract. So like, let's talk about vacation days, right? We, we have to allow for vacation. How does that work for classified? Does they work with their immediate supervisor about how they plan when that vacation will take place?
Yeah, so classified, we work closely with our supervisors to plan vacations, you know, according to what the needs are in the department or throughout the district. Now, for our employees that work less than 12 months, so a lot of our school site employees that are directly serving our students, they earn vacation time, but typically vacation is not allowed during the school year because their services are needed, you know, on a day-to-day basis to support our students. So that's one way that we can kind of curb the use of subs during the school year. It, it's just planning and then looking at the reasons and like, if there are extenuating circumstances and that kind of thing.
And then I would just also note that the trainings that happened using educator effectiveness grant money that was utilized, those trainings would not be attended or approved because we don't have those dollars anymore.
Okay, moving on to the variance in supplies as materials. So these came in under budget, meaning, and these are specific areas that we came in under budget. Under budget doesn't mean that those supplies are not needed per se. They just weren't received, you know, before the close of fiscal year. So, or the POs were set up too high at like, like, for example, facilities, if they're estimating how many parts they're going to need, you know, like shop parts they're going to need, they'll put in a, a blanket PO for a certain amount. And if they don't hit it, which, that's great, right? For this fiscal year that you came in under. So what happens next is we would sit down with the directors and talk about their annual budgets for the upcoming year. So like Prop 28 supplies, those are just items that weren't received within the fiscal year. So... the fiscal year, so they still may need to be placed in this upcoming year's budget. Um, contracted services, where our, our huge swing was, the three-point-four million dollars, right? So the largest variance of that was that healthy contract, um, contracted services invoice that we, we didn't budget for, because we weren't expecting the invoice, neither were we expecting the revenue in this fiscal year, that's about a million dollars. Um, expanded learning, which is ELOP, once again categorical funds, um, their contracts came in three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, I think they're still working on spending old money that they need to, and so we're okay with that. Well, not okay with it, but I know that they have money that's self-sufficient in running the program, they're not, they're not like encroaching on the general fund at this point.
And I get that, and I appreciated those two points, but that still leaves two million dollars.
Yeah, so the variances continue on the next couple of slides. Uh, these are all falling under, uh, contract, uh, and services, so utilities, electricity, water, trash, um, gas, we came under, uh, where we thought we were gonna be, but the rest were about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand higher. Once the solar kicks on, hopefully the electricity bill will go away, right? As it's kicking on, our cellphone service, um, it was a hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars higher than what we projected to be, same with legal fees.
Well, how, so just on that point, how is that possible? How's a hundred thousand dollars more for cellphones that, you pay us, we pay a service rate, or do we pay per minute?
No, we, we pay, um, a certain plan, and I know Thomas was up here a couple of months before talking about the POTS lines that were, the prices were increasing on, and just the amount, honestly, the amount of cellphones that we're replacing is, we, we do, we do a cellphone audit here.
So a cellphone, cellphone service is not cellphone service? It's the hard, it's the asset too?
It's like the, yeah, it's, it's everything, you know, cellphone, yeah. It's like our Verizon or AT&amp;T contract, and that would take into place when you're replacing a phone, that would go in there, our POTS lines, all of that would, would still come out of services and contracts.
Yeah, so, see, these are the kind of things that, I don't know if we put the title difference, but this is what makes people upset, right? And this is, no, from an accounting standpoint, you know what it is, right? You know that it's because fifty people broke their cellphone and we spent fifty thousand dollars replacing it. But if I'm somebody from last year, and I said, my job is critical, I make sixty thousand dollars a year, and we spent a hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars more on cellphone service? Like, it, we've never been in this before, right? We don't know how things look and how people are gonna react to it. So I think now that we're in this, and we're gonna be doing reductions, and stuff is gonna look weird, we're gonna have to come up with better explanations when we're talking to the public about things like this, because years back, this wasn't a hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars, we probably would've skipped over it. But not this year, because of what we did last year, which we're gonna have to do more next year, so I don't want people feeling this way next year. So we need to start talking about these things that we need to change, so that we don't look, you know, like, I'm looking at that as like, you know, it almost pissed me off, right?
Also, I mean, one of the things that's missing on these slides is what was budgeted, right? So this is, this is showing us the variance, but I don't know what was budgeted for that, right? So I think in terms of information, it's not just, well, how much extra did we spend that we weren't expecting to spend, but like, you know, what's the delta, right? Like, what, is it twenty percent more, is it thirty percent more, or what, what are, what was the original amount?
That's, that's good feedback for us. We wrestled with the simplest way to convey how we got here, so that, that's good feedback. We'll, we'll incorporate that for the next presentation.
Yeah, because in my previous slides, we, we started with the delta, like, here, supplies or services were over three-point-seven million, then what I'm trying to capture in the next slides is, what did that three-point-seven million account for? Where was that? But yeah, I mean, we could get really into the details and be like, hey, we budgeted for cellphone service, uh, you know, whatever, fifty thousand, a thousand dollars, and the expense came in this much, yeah, yeah, that's, that's something that, and then also to President Peterson's suggestion is to fully vet out these explanations on what self-
Yeah, we're, we're in it. Like, we, we have to do stuff different than we've ever done before, because we've never been in this situation. So all of us are gonna be starting to look at things from a different lens. So what we're doing is kinda preparing you right now to say so for next year, when we're asking these questions, you know, we're gonna know that this is what it is, this is the percentage, and this is the reason why we made the decision, because everybody is looking at what we're doing. And when we get to the actuals, and we're saying, we don't have money, and then they look at some of these things and says, well, it looks like you sure do. We need to be able to, and I, I understand what you're gonna say, I'm, I'm talking from the perspective of public and people that don't have a job anymore. That's, that's the perspective that I'm talking to right now. We all know sometimes what these things are, but the public don't, and we need to be transparent with them, so that we're not crying wolf, saying, we don't have any money, but we're overspending, right? We have to let them understand that this is from the, what we budgeted is the difference, not from actual money, or, we just have to be more, we have to be clearer on, on what we're doing.
Got it. Um, yep, yep, absolutely. And to your point, um, at the end, it's, I can't, I'm not saying we lost money, we still had a net income of two-point-three million dollars at the end of the day, when revenue minus expenses, minus contributions, everything, it's still a net income, is right?
Hassan, I think, I think, I think they got it.
But just let me, but, but just let me make sure that something is clear. That's not good. That's not good from our perspective, because we're saying, we didn't have the money and we let people go, and then at the end of the year, we're saying, we made the money, right? So either way you look at it, whether, if you're saying that we have extra money, as a, a school district, you don't ever wanna not have money, but extra money looks like we did things that we didn't have to do.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me just rephrase that. Okay, I'm not saying we have extra money, we, we landed four-hundred-thousand dollars less than where we thought we would land. So what I'm saying is, our, but where our projections, what we stated to you in previous presentations, the NYPD that we presented to you guys is pretty accurate, about four-hundred-thousand dollars off. So those projections for the NYPD as far as where our deficit is, uh, we'll see what transpired in payroll and personnel from the start of school year to when we come back in December to present, to see how off we were. But what I'm trying to indicate here with this presentation is like, yeah, these are, this is, this is where the chips fell at the end of the fiscal year, we were off in certain areas, but the bigger picture, um, we were off by four-hundred-thousand dollars. What that means is the presentation that we did at adopted budget with our NYPD, it's not off by millions. And so that seven-million-dollar deficit that we projected for the, for the three years out, that's still our reality.
Well, we're, we're kinda off, though, I mean, we're off by, we, we, we were lucky because we got that one-point-six million. I mean, that's, so, the reality is, we need to know how much we were off, and how much, you know, how many twenty-dollar bills we found on the ground, you know what I'm saying? So we, we need a little bit more information.
And, and we, I'll, I'll just interject, we agree, we agree. And that's why in the opening slides where we talk about like budgeting conservatively, in a budget, in a, in a budget our size, we expect swings into millions of dollars, and we do everything we can to try and figure out where are those swings most likely to happen? And even then, with, sometimes there are things that just come out of the blue, where we just, we couldn't have anticipated that, but I just wanted to know, fundamentally, we agree. And so coming back to, um, what President Peterson was saying about how the budget communicates the, the board's intention, um, and the, their, uh, discipline toward this process, we echo that. I, I just, I want you to know, like, Hassan's doing a great job doing what he does as a CBO, talking about, hey, look, look at the budget, like, we're, we're good on the budget, as we communicate what the budget means to people, I just wanted to like call attention to, we're saying, and I firmly believe it, being off at the very end of the day only by four-hundred thousand, great, and that we will have some of our community members saying, well, that could've been four jobs, right? And, and that's always gonna be the bar. So we, we recognize that the bar is set very high for us, especially as a communication tool, and I want to acknowledge that, we, we understand that, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll continue to, to improve, um, this process. Uh, last thing I'll say, just before either there's more questions or Hassan continues, uh, to the point you made about like for the cellphone service, we, we'll provide the, the detail, I'm taking some notes here, um, and we also, when we get this data, we don't just absorb it and let it go. Hassan and, and Thomas, immediately as they were, you know, and Joey were going through this presentation, were noting these things, and we're initiating like a cellphone audit to find out how much of that, that is specifically cellphones, um, and the services tied to those, where we can reduce those, um, those services and in those contracts. So we're, we're absolutely engaged in that process.
So one concern I have, like, when we look at all of these things, is what's the feedback loop for the people who are, like, responsible for those purchases, right? Like, if, if I'm, you know, if I'm, uh, Thomas, right, and I'm responsible for the cellphones and technology purchases, am I seeing monthly reports on how my, how my expenditures are differing from what was budgeted? Because it seems like some of this, again, I don't know what the budgeted amount was, so I'm, I'm a little bit flying blind, but, I mean, if, if it, April or March, they were at their full budget for cellphone service, somebody should be saying, hey, guys, like, we're gonna go way over, right? But I don't know what the system is like for us, and if somebody gets those reports and is, right, like, that's way outside of kind of our role, but I, I'm just curious, does that happen?
So, yes, we sit with the, with the directors, myself and Joey, and kinda go over their, like, where they are year-to-date and what they have left in their budget. The cellphone audit that we're conducting is looking at all of our, looking at our bill, and looking at all of the phone numbers, we have a lot of cellphones issued, it bothers me, actually, it's something that's a project of mine, that I'm trying to get this under control, but, um, there is, um, so we're looking at all the, all the phone lines, we make phone calls on all of them, deactivating the ones that haven't been used, because we could tell, like, okay, these lines haven't been used for this many years, so we would put out text messages or send, um, messages to that phone, and if they don't respond within the time frame that we give them, whether that's two, three weeks, I'm going ahead and disconnecting that, and then if it is something that, it, it's happened in some instances where somebody's like, hey, uh, my phone's disconnected, and I'd be like, well, we tried to reach out, like, several times over a period of a month, and we got no response, and so we went ahead and canceled it. You're not, you haven't used your cellphone for about six, seven months, why are we paying for this?
But Hassan, that seems way below your pay grade. Like, it seems to me, like, there should be, like, do directors have ownership of their budgets to, to, to know, oh my goodness, like, I am, you know, I'm looking at the Conica Minolta lease, and I'm realizing that I'm going over budget?
The, the answer is yes, and what I'll, I'll add is, though, like, um, I, I wanna go broader, so we, although we were doing this at intervals with principals, kind of like beginning of year, mid-year, and end of year, the practices that you're talking about, we're now implementing every month, because the expenditures can swing month-to-month, and we want them to know, like, where do you stand every single month? Uh, because the, the previous practices, as was already noted, we're in a new era, um, and we need to, their assistance to be able to project what those expenditures are. And I agree with you that some of the things that Hassan is engaged in right now is very granular, and I hope in the future he can let it go. The and to that is that, and when we get down to that, there actually are some really important conversations, which is who previously had what, um, allocation, and then we can't just arbitrarily shut something off, because then that has an effect on, like, operations. And so right now, as we get more granular, we're all getting much more granular than we would have, resetting what our operational expectations are, and then hopefully after we reset and keep resetting, then we can let go. Uh, but right now, because, like, for example, the questions that you are asking necessitate us to be very, very into the details, and that's not work right now that we can just pass off to other individuals, because coming back to, um, like the, I don't want you to go back to the slide, but the slide about where we were over with sub-cost at the sites, it looks big when you put it all on one, like, one line item, but that could be, you know, four-thousand dollars at a site, when you, when you total it up. So it could be miniscule when you just pull it out by a site, but when you put it on one line item, and it's seventy thousand dollars, now all of a sudden it's catching your attention, and that's that level of granularity that we're, that we're now operating in.
Yeah, just going, one last thing on the cellphone, so when somebody exits and leaves the district, that's, you know, entrance and exit procedures, that, you know, HR would collect the cellphone, send it back up to us, or to technology, they would wipe it and look at the state of it before we issue a brand-new cellphone.
So we're going to, uh, take a break after this, but a lot of my questions today are gonna come from a perspective of people from the outside being transparent. I've been running a P and L for twenty years, so the, my questions is not from my lack of experience of running a P and L, it's because as a board president, this whole year, anytime I'm meeting with anybody, I'm saying, we wanna be transparent, and when something looks like especially, we need to talk about it, because no one here hides money, everything we do is, is in the public. And coming from something that I have extensive experience on, is that I know we're in a, a, a budget crunch, but we need to empower our supervisors and our managers to make critical decisions on those one-thousand-dollar levels, two-thousand-dollar levels, because that ends up being a hundred thousand dollars by each individual. And I know we probably talked about this with a lot of supervisors and managers, but we really need to tell them that you are responsible for this department, and every dollar that we overspend or underspend is in your preview, so we need to do stuff different than we've ever done before, and I really think that's gonna, uh, help a lot. And we're on a ten-minute break till eight fourteen. Okay, and we're back with the business.
We're still on contracts and services, right? The $3.4 million difference. Here are some of the other areas that we were over in, in the contract services. So, for audits, we had at Mound Elementary, we had a state grant that required an additional audit. We had election costs that when we went out for the parcel tax, those election costs came in, causing a variance. That, that was a line item that we didn't, we didn't budget for the actual cost of the election. Conica Malta lease, there was a, a difference, because there was a stapler addition added to be able to add, you know, automatic staples to all of the copying machines. That was about $16,000. The rest of it was the volume of prints, color copies, black and white copies that we get charged for. And so, that was, that was based on, the overage was based on that. And so, what we've implemented now with the principals is meeting with them on a monthly basis, giving them their volume of how much they're printing, whether it's black and white or color. And then I would say, like, the ESC security contract increased by 11,000, and that was just, I mean, I could just say that that, flat out, that was based on the amount of board meetings we had last fiscal year. It was a lot more than usual, right? And so, there was a lot more events that required us to do additional, hire additional security. But in speaking with Mary Ann, she indicated that we would be reducing.
We've already reduced that number. It was not only the number of board meetings, but we used an overflow room a number of times that we had never done before. So, between those two things, but we have scaled back our contract now that obviously we don't have as many people in attendance. If we need to, we'll scale it back up if we have to bring in the overflow room, but I don't anticipate that at this time.
Question about the educator effectiveness funds, because we had on the previous slide subs, right? So, what, what is this?
So, this would be like, I would say, contracts, meaning there's any conferences or travel that would fall under here, if there's any professional development, we're bringing in speakers, or anything, anything of that nature.
So, that's beyond what was budgeted?
Yes.
And, so why were we $135,000?
I don't have the exact.
I'm actually looking at Greg and Gina.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to clarify, since I'm not the budget person. The educator effectiveness funds for the contracted services was over what we anticipated, but not the whole budget. So, if there was, you had like $3 million in the budget, we didn't go over the total amount available to us, but in the category of contracted services.
We budgeted less than.
Rather than maybe anticipating that maybe we were gonna only need substitute costs, maybe staffs developed together, their professional development plan was to include a particular type of professional development, or attending, I know that we had several people attended specific conferences, and so maybe that's how the allocation of funds was. It was in like a different category of spending, rather than overspending on that grant amount.
Once again, it's categorical funding, so as long as we're not overspending the amount that was, that's given to us for, you know, the total allocation, I mean, I'm okay with it, because we have the money, we need to spend it, they're spending it for the allowable use, and it's just that we didn't have, we didn't set up the proper budget for that specific account in contracted services. And I could say that for Prop 28 contracts as well. We know that we have previous years' funding that we need to, we're on a timeline to spend, even though we have the 50-50% allocation, meaning we could spend 50% on staffing, 50% on, you know, supplies and contracts, we're still behind, and we need to catch up with that, those expenditures.
Maybe since we're gonna be looking at things like this when we see the plus, right? Maybe we should just come up with something like, say, if we made that green, it's, it's that category is over, but it's not over the whole budget of the, then that way we don't have to spend time talking about it. We say, oh, it's green, that means they're underspent here, overspent here, you know, but it's balanced, or, or something like that, because in these coming years, we are gonna be asking different questions that we haven't asked in the previous, previous years.
And so, capital outlays, I know, I know the previous couple of board meetings, we brought the final change order notice for ELOP, EP Foster annex, and so, we just needed to align our budget with what the actuals were that came in, and so, we know that that project is done and completed, so it's wrapped away.
Can I ask about the SRO service contract?
Oh, yes.
So, that's $54,000 over, and we have an MOU with the city to split that cost. So, was it over $100,000?
Uh, yeah, so, what, 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 what we're reporting here to you is specifically our portion of the additional cost, and I could say that it was due to, sorry, give me one second here, SRO overages were due to site events, such as graduation dances, sporting events, additional events that were outside of that contract that was approved.
Outside the contract, so that's, okay, thank you.
Above and beyond, yeah.
But those wouldn't be necessarily things that shouldn't have been in the budget. I mean, we have graduations every year, we have proms, we have, you know what I mean? So, if those are the kind of things that are recurring.
So, I think we budgeted for that SRO city contract that we got, and we didn't, we didn't account for the additional amounts, which we should have. And so, now going forward, if this is gonna occur every year, once again, we would go into our budget and adjust it upwards or downwards accordingly.
And is the same thing true for the site fund contracts, that they overspent on contracts, but did not overspend their site funds?
Yes, yes. So, this is the big, this is the picture, that, so this is the total picture that we're looking at here, is the unrestricted, unestimated actuals to actuals. So, if you look at the net increase, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line, at estimated actuals, we said we would be at about $2.7 million, right? And we came in at about $2.3, so that's that $407,000 decrease, and that's how our ending fund balance would be impacted, right? So, at estimated actuals, we said our ending fund balance was gonna be $27.1 million, and now we're actually at $26.7 million. And so, like I mentioned, we would, how this would impact going forward is, we would just change, we would need to update the beginning balance at first interim of where our adopted budget is.
Can you go back a slide? Because it seems like we don't just need to update the, the 407, right? Like, we've learned some things in this process about where our.
Oh, yes.
Estimates were not accurate. So, that is also gonna impact our NYPD, because now we're gonna be budgeting more money for some things like subs, and, right, like.
So, yeah, so, the first and immediate impact that these have is our beginning fund balance. Like, that's how we start, it's like, okay, is our beginning balance aligning to where we ended our fiscal year at? So, yes, that is just one process of many that we would be going through during first interim. We would have to look at all the sub-costs again, and not only sub-costs, we'd look at classified salaries, certificated salaries, who was hired on that we didn't budget for in adopted budget, specifically looking at special education, looking at the contracts for special education. I know there was a, quite a bit of an increase of para 2, para 3 hires, which we're expecting, because we want to take back the contracts as they're more expensive, but we need to look at, at that point, like, look at our total special ed numbers. Did they increase from fiscal year, causing us to have more costs just naturally, because we need to provide more services? So, it's not always gonna be a one-to-one, like, oh, you're reducing this contract and you're saving this X money, because at the same time, we have to look at the student population and see what needs are changing. But, yes, along with everything else, looking at supplies, contracts, capital outlay, what are people's projections for what their.
Yeah, our capital outlay actually would have put us a negative.
Yeah.
Instead of being.
Yeah. The capital outlays.
Our capital outlay was a $407,000.
$66,000. And that was, that was due to the EP Foster modernization. So, we know that project is finished, but that doesn't mean that there's any other, and we know that what, that project was paid out of expanded learning, which is categorical funds, but we would still have to go back and see what we projected for capital outlay for the adopted budget, meaning capital outlays, big items that we're gonna be purchasing or fixing, like those buses, the electric buses would fall in, in there. We would have to look at all of the areas and see, did we capture everything for capital outlay? Is there any big, huge projects that's gonna be paid out of the general fund that we're not, that's not gonna be paid out of building fund or bond fund that we should be accounting for here?
ELOP is, is their own money, though, right?
ELOP is still in the general fund, but it's categorical funds that.
That you have to use only on the, okay.
So, here, on this one, our, our variance is $6 million for the unrestricted. So, that's actually even worse than it was on the restricted, unrestricted combined.
So, when you're looking at the combined, is the combined is includes the restricted and restricted, and in SACS, you're looking at restricted, unrestricted, and then the combined is your big picture. But this is reflecting the net income on the unrestricted side, which for our deficit discussion, right, our NYPD discussion for the projections for the out-year, the unrestricted, unrestricted general fund portion of it, is where our beginning balance, our fund balance matters, because we look at the fund balance and project out three years and see if we're still able to make that 3%, not on the restricted side, just on the unrestricted ending fund balance. So, our fund balance here on this side decreased about $407,000, and so, that impacts your ending fund balance, right? And so.
Yeah, no, my, my point is that if you are looking at the second or third slide, that's just the general fund, unrestricted and restricted expenditure chains, right? That's 3.35 million in unexpected expenditures, but actually, if we look at the impact of just the unrestricted. So, somehow the restricted buffered us.
Yes.
Right? Like, because actually, it's significantly worse when you just look at this.
Well, yeah, because we, because we know we have one-time dollars right now that is buffering us. So, we have the learning recovery block grant, we do have this upcoming, we just got, you know, additional $4.5 million, talking about first interim, that's what you would project, like, we, we got an additional $4.5 million one-time fund, which will continue to buffer the unrestricted general fund, because we're able to shift potential costs there that we don't have the funds for in the unrestricted side. But, yes, you're absolutely correct. The restricted side is buffering us because of those one-time dollars right now that we do have. But that's, once again, the NYPD projects, the way we have the NYPD structured is, as those one-time funds are running out, those expenses are reflected to come back to the unrestricted until the decision is made by the board, or unless we get additional funds from the state, which I haven't heard of any at this point, besides that student-professional mandated block grant that we're talking about. And so, right now, as it is, your ending balance is about $26.7 million on the unrestricted side. That leaves us with a 9.73% reserve for economic uncertainty, and the remaining is just that revolving cash and $365,000 that we have stored away. On your restricted side, here is your categorical grant balances that you have. You have about $12.8 million. So, this is 24, 25 fiscal year, right? So, this does not account for any new one-time money that we, that the $4.5 million I was just talking about is not accounted for in this balance. You'll see that at first interim at 25, 26, first interim report. So, this is what makes up that $12.8 million. You have $2.7 million sitting in Prop 28, learning recovery block grant, you have $6.7 million at the end of fiscal year 24, 25, which is gonna be fully exhausted in fiscal year, the current fiscal year 25, 26. Educator effectiveness, you have a small balance of $348,000. And so, yeah, and that, that is just the rest of the smaller grants that we. And so, yeah, and that, those are just the rest of the smaller grants that we have remaining. And so with that, just in summary, I think we've said this over and over, we are ending fund balance on the unrestricted side, it was a positive, $2.3 million, reserve for economics uncertainties, 9.73%. Our average payroll right now is about $17 million, which covers, so that 9.73% covers about one and a half months of payroll in, in case of any unforeseen economic circumstances. Revenues came in higher than expected, contributions were less, unrestricted ending balance reflects an increase, while the restricted balance shows a decrease due to us intentionally spending down those one-time funds such as LRBG, educator effectiveness, Prop 28, and then we have received one-time special mental health funds. And so with that, it's recommended that the Board of Trustees approve our 24, 25 unaudited, un, yeah, unaudited actuals financial report, and so, like I mentioned, we would move forward with adjusting our beginning fund balance and going through the whole process of first interim, looking at every single line item and seeing where we are with our projections, and we would come back at first interim and look at our adopted budget and see where, where we are with our NYPD. Questions?
Almost seems rhetorical at this point. So I have a couple of things, you know, over the summer, we had our special study session on the budget. I think this is the type of information that we need more time to digest, I recognize that we have a deadline for this, like, you know, we essentially have to approve this tonight, but there, but I have a lot of questions so that we can, so that we can better understand it and make better decisions moving forward, right? Again, like, this isn't about blame, I totally appreciate that, like, you guys are doing a, a good job and that there are a lot of variables in these things, but in order to be able to make decisions moving forward, we need to have a better understanding of all of these pieces, right? Like, to be able to manage that and know that when we are making cuts or adding things, that, that we understand the ramifications to the budget. So I would like to request additional information about this at, at a future meeting, and ideally with enough time so that we can have conversations, but, you know, not as we're coming into where are we going to be cutting, right? But like, let's understand these things better so that we can be more informed and understand where we have flexibility and where we don't, because, you know, and I shared this with this on, like, we agonized for weeks and weeks about the cuts, right? And then, and then to see that, you know, the cell phone bill was $140,000 more than what we expected is really demoralizing, right? Because it just feels like, okay, we cut this and then we ended up spending more there that we didn't have any say in. So I think that partly is, is we just need more time to understand these things. So that was item number one. And then the second thing is, when we look at that $6 million of unrestricted money, I know some of that was intentional spend down of restricted funds, but it would be really helpful to have a clearer breakdown of how much of that $6 million was intentional one-time expenditures, right? And how much of it was overages on, on our budget? Because we knew that we were spending down our LR, LRBG money, right? And some of the educator effectiveness grants and those sorts of things, but like, how much in each of those categories did we overspend so that, so again, just so that we have that bigger picture?
Thank you.
I would just add, I mean, I get it, there's going to be variables, because as brilliant as you are, you are not a fortune teller, so I get it, I'm not saying that, but, I mean, I think the part that keeps, I keep sticking on is that 3.3 million overages, you know, and I mean, fortunately, we also had some extra money coming in to help balance that, so we did end up with that net that was great, I'm giving, you know, I'm giving you that, but it's still that, that piece, and it's kind of like you're saying, I, when I look at these, I look at every single one of these as people's job, like, that, that could have saved, you know, two people, that could have saved one person, that could, you know, so, I mean, we, we just, we, we have to run, you know, when you talk about like the financial dust, like, we can't afford, we just can't afford to have that financial dust, everything has to be so tight that by the time, you know, we're in January and we're looking at if we're going to need potential cuts, where they're going to be, I mean, when we get to that point, we have to know that we have swept every single corner, and there's no dust bunnies anywhere that we're missing, so.
Just wish to concur with my colleagues, yeah, having a better understanding of, of this part of the budget would be very helpful. I know that we have to approve it tonight, like Sabrina said, so giving us a little bit more time next time would be, I think would be beneficial, and again, you know, we're, we're approaching, you know, a fiscal cliff as it is, and we're going to have to make some very tough decisions, and like Shannon said, we, we're, we're looking at this as jobs, right? And how many jobs can we save? How can we preserve these families here in Ventura? So that's, that's my thinking, I think that's all of our thinking going forward, so if we can have a little bit tighter budget and a little bit more information, that'd be very beneficial.
So just this year, I've probably talked to more supervisors and managers than I, I ever have, and I, and I know that the conversation about being in charge of your department has happened, but I don't really think that the managers, supervisors understand how critical making those small decisions in each department affects the overall budget. So if I can say anything, is to go back and talk to those supervisors and managers and tell them that, in reality, these overages and where we're spending, they can stop it there, and if they really feel empowered to do it, it's going to be the support that they're going to need when they start to make decisions that we've never made before, they're going to need the support of this room to say, yes, absolutely, they're making that decision because we have to, and I think if we really hammer that home, I think we can solve a lot of these 50,000, 70,000, 80,000 over budget, it's going to be the support we give those managers and supervisors when they're making the decision, because they're going to start having to make hard decisions that they didn't do in the past, and I think our support is really going to empower them to be confident when they, when they make those decisions.
So with that, I will move approval of the unaudited actuals.
Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries forward zero.
And I just want to say thank you, I had, even before today, I had a million questions, and I appreciate you answering all of them.
And trustees, thank you for the direction, your, your points are well taken, and we will absolutely, in our next cabinet meeting and other manager positions, we will continue to reemphasize the points that you made, thank you.
Okay, next we have a ward of contract, C20, excuse me, through 26, Portola Modular Restroom Building, first read, and I just have a concern, obviously
Yeah, we have
about the difference between the, you know, $548,000, it's $100,000 less than anybody else.
Terry.
Evening. The, this, this was the, the second time that this one was bid, so we, we actually canceled the first one because there were some anomalies, and we rebid it. This process that we followed was very similar to our bond project processes, the contractors went through our formal pre-qualification process before they submitted their bid, and I, I'll note that our consultant, Balfour Beatty, has worked with this company a couple times in Los Virginas without any issue, so at this point, having gone through our process, there's, there's no reason for us to suspect that their, their low bid was, or their, because they were the lowest bidder, they, they can't perform the job.
But are they like a specialty or something? Because I remember one time we had a bid like this, and you guys said, this is all they do, so they even bid it lower than anybody else, is that anything like, like this bid, or is it just, they just came the lowest?
No, yeah, this, this isn't a specialty job, this is a job that can be performed by any A or B licensed contractor, they were the ones that, that provided the, the lowest bid, the, the contractors do have a period of time where they can withdraw their bid if they feel that it was not in line, or that they may have missed something, they did not elect to do that at this time. Usually, when we look at bids, if there is a big discrepancy between what our, our engineer's estimate is and the bid, then we actually go back to the contractor and double check, make sure that they've included all their subcontractors, that everything looks in line.
Do you have any other questions? All right, entertaining motion.
I move to accept the bid for the Portola Modular Restroom Building to ASY Construction and Energy in the amount of $548,000.
Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries forward zero.
Next, we have a request for approval of contracts exceeding $25,000.
Any questions from the board?
If no one has questions, I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries forward zero.
Okay, next we're going to consent calendar, but we are going to pull 15A3, 15C1, 15C2, 15D1, and 15D2.
President Peterson, please note, we have a public comment for 15A3.
Okay. Do, do we have any discussion, we've already pulled
You pulled
We've, we've already pulled what we want to pull, is there any other questions about the consent calendar?
I just want some clarity, so right now, we're just talking about consent calendar, not the items we pulled, correct? Or can I, or are we going to have discussions?
I can move approval of all the other items, right?
But we, we're going to have public comment first, so anything besides the five that we pulled, do we need to have any questions before we hear the public comment?
So I was going to make a motion that, to approve all of the consent items except the ones that we've pulled.
And that 15A3 is one that you pulled?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can
So you can approve
And then we'll, we'll do these other five. So I move that.
Second.
And I'm sure Amy understands where we're voting now.
I got you. Trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries forward zero on those items.
Okay, and we'll hear the public comment.
Great, we have a public comment from Jasmine Duran.
Duran, and I'm here tonight as a representative for ASVC's advocacy committee to share our concerns regarding the proposed MOU between VUSD and Parent Institute for Quality Education, PIQE. The Autism Society Ventura County Advocacy Committee is dedicated to championing policies that improve the lives of individuals with autism and their families. Our guidelines emphasize transparency, inclusivity, and the protection of family rights, which are core principles that guide our work. While we recognize the value of parent engagement programs like PIQE, we are deeply concerned about the recruitment process outlined in the agreement, specifically the automatic sharing of parent contact information with a third-party organization raises significant privacy concerns, especially given our current climate. Protecting sensitive family data is paramount, and any outreach effort must prioritize transparency and informed consent. Families should have the right to opt-in voluntarily rather than having their information shared automatically. This concern aligns with our guiding principles, which calls for policies that respect the rights of families and prioritizes their input. Sharing parent information without explicit consent undermines trust and risks violating the very principle of equity and empowerment that programs like PIQE aim to promote. We urge the Board to reject or revise this MOU to ensure that recruitment efforts respect the privacy and autonomy of families. Engagement programs should empower families while maintaining their confidence and trust in the school district. On behalf of the Autism Society of Ventura County's Advocacy Committee, I thank you for considering these concerns and for your continued commitment to supporting the families of Ventura Unified School District. Thank you.
In addition to that community concern, I had some questions, because this says it's not to exceed $18,000, but that's for one site, but, and it, it specifically calls out in the, in the contract that for each additional site, it's an additional $14,000, and that if it's like bigger than a certain group, so are we, is this contract specifically saying, no matter what, it will not be more than $18,000, because that would be then one site?
Yeah, my, my current, and I appreciate you raising that, my current understanding is that we run PK at two sites, and, scheduled for next year, so I need to, I need to learn more about that.
The contract specifically says, item E, the total cost of the program is $14,500 per school, plus an additional $2,500 if there are more than 15 parents, and then if there are more than 50 parents, it's an additional 125, so it seems like there's a lot of additive costs, and didn't, it didn't seem clear that the cap was a true cap.
Yeah, absolutely, if, if the board were to take action tonight, what it would be like other contracts is, if we have a guaranteed program at one site, that one site would move forward, and if there, the program evolved at a second site where they had critical mass in order to run the program, we would then need to bring back an, an amendation to that, is, so that, that's how that would proceed, but if you would prefer to delay, bring it back in a different form, we can do that as well, it's at the board's purview.
I think we might be in a position where we need to delay, because I also had some questions that I would like cleared up about how we're creating those parent phone lists. I wanted to know if parents are opting in to be included on that list? I know we have our family liaisons at some of our schools, and that was one of the discussions we had during all the layoffs, was that those were incredibly valuable people because they are trusted staff members to so many of our families, and I think that it would be valuable for those family liaisons to be doing the outreach to our families to include them in this, so I have some concerns about whether or not using a third party in order to recruit families is a good idea.
I think, Dr. Bellis, you have some comment on that? I, I did want to offer that our, our family liaisons do, do that outreach, they, they partner with them in that outreach, and the targeted groups for this program specifically are multilingual families, families that aren't normally able to be engaged in their students' secondary education, understanding college pathways, post-secondary pathways, et cetera, and in addition, it's, our family liaisons also reach out to families with students that have attendance concerns, trying to help partner with them to promote better attendance and a vision of their post-secondary lives, to help them engage in schools more so, it is, it is targeting groups, the whole purpose of this is to target groups and families that don't normally have access to the kinds of information that help them partner with their own children to support academic achievement and post-secondary outcomes.
I don't think that was what I was looking for, I'm looking for specifically, how is this third-party getting the parent data? Are, are family liaisons reaching out to families, ask them if they want to be included on this list that's going to a third-party?
Parents are, parents are not opting into this list, these are targeted lists that the These are targeted lists that the schools produce of, of those students, or of those families. So, yes, they are, uh, family liaisons, school administration, and PK are working together with the lists that are generated by the school, based on those things I have.
So then this is suggesting we create a list, and we're giving it to this third party in order to have contact to our parents without their permission?
Uh, y- yes, it's, that, that's what the MOU is about. It's about the outreach, but it's not, uh, student identifiable information, it's not access to our database. It's here are the, here are the parents that we'd like to engage with, here are the parents that currently are unengaged. So partner with us in reaching out and helping, um, persuade them to be a part of this program because it's beneficial.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, and if it, again, if, if it seems like we don't, you want to have this come back, we're, we're great with that. I do just want to comment too that, um, we've been running this program for a couple of years. We haven't received negative parent comments, so I think that's important for the board to know. And conversely, I also think that, um, when we had our, um, our D-LAC committee, you heard some positive comments about the parent empowerment. So I think we'll bring back some of those things, so that way you can make sure that we're assurances, and, um, we'll take a look at the, the specific pieces of the contract language because I think it's important, um, even if it's in the, in the portion of the cover where we talk about how, um, the role of the family liaison and how that's a little bit different in terms of the implementation, that seems like it's important to hear too. So we'll, we'll have that ready.
I appreciate that. I think that's important. You know, we're dealing with students with disabilities, so we need to be extra careful and extra precautious.
Additionally, um, I would like to look at how many people have used this in the past, right? So if we're spending this money, what's the participation rate? And then what's the outcomes? Like, you said it's beneficial. You know, what, what is the data? Because we have used it for a number of years, right? Like, are those kids' attendance improving? Are we finding that those parents are more engaged? Like, um, if, if we're spending this money, then, um, you know, I, I just think we need more data before we just double down on it.
Yep, we will, uh, we'll bring any data that we can. Also, just recognizing that in some cases, uh, in particular, thinking about the parents, um, the presentations that they provided, that data in some cases could be anecdotal or qualitative, that's also, but to the degree that we can have quantitative data, uh, we absolutely will.
Okay, now we'll have a discussion on fifteen C one.
So specifically, my question there, were the terms, um, abolish for the para twos and ones? And I was hoping we could get a little bit more information. I did, I was able to get some feedback, um, through email on this, uh, but I just wanted to understand, I know we were really recruiting hard for para twos and threes. So were these positions where this, like, for example, the students no longer have the para attached to their IEP, or the students moved to a different district? Or, I, I just need some more feedback on why we're abolishing those positions.
So there's a variety of reasons. It could include, um, the positions no longer being needed because of IEPs, what's, um, outlined in our IEPs. Or it could be student movement, students are no longer in our district, they've moved onto other sites where we already have a para in place that can absorb those supports. So it can be a combination of any of those things.
And I'll just add, it could also be that student transferred either to a county or non-public setting, and that, so we were, we are no longer in the position to provide that service. So it could be a handful of reasons.
Typically, they're one-on-ones. That's what you're saying?
They could be one-on-ones, or it could be, uh, classroom changes where classes are no longer at a school site, maybe going to a different school site.
I think the, the key takeaway is that whatever it is, it's tied to student need. And that's, that's, whatever the combination of things, it's the, that's tied to directly or indirectly, if it's a classroom, to student need.
Well, I actually have a question. Because consent calendar says routine in nature, right? This is something that we always, so is this something that we normally do?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions about C one? And that would be fifteen C two. Classified personnel changes.
Okay, so my question on this one was about the thirty-nine month reemployment. First of all, happy to see people being able to come off that list. I think my question is, um, are, like, did we have other people leave and make this position available, or is this a new position that's being created? Because there was a lot, there were quite a few of them on there.
So on that transactions report, um, that's listed under classified personnel changes, we summarize all the different, um, employee activity that takes place. So those particular individuals that you're seeing listed as being on the thirty-nine month reemployment list, those are, um, employees who didn't actually secure, um, another employment opportunity with the district as of June thirtieth, so they were actually separated and placed on the thirty-nine month reemployment list. So at this time, those individuals, um, don't hold a current regular position for us?
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I, I was reading it to be that we were taking them off that list, but we're putting, okay. All right, thank you. And then my other question was about the, um, BCBA's, and, um, I was wondering, uh, if you could tell me specifics about why those are being added and how many we have in the, how many BCBA's we have in the district and, like, what their roles are? Because I know sometimes they work with general ed, sometimes they're working with special ed. I was wondering if you could give us kind of a little overview of those positions.
I might not be able to get into the specific details of, like, what their actual roles are, but I can, um, let the board know that we currently have six BCBA's, um, in the special ed department. The two that were listed, um, were new hires to fill vacancies, and so one of the positions was a new position established for the inclusion program, um, at the beginning of the school year. And then the other position, um, we were actually contracting through Selpa to fulfill those needs and those services, and so we brought that in-house and are no longer, um, contracting, uh, through Selpa for that, for those needs.
Thank you.
Okay, just so that we're current, the fifteen A three, we're definitely bringing back, we're not voting on tonight, correct? Fifteen C one and fifteen, uh, C two, the questions were answered. Uh, next, we're fifteen D one.
Yes, I had a partial, um, answer to that. I, my question was about the US Bank payment system, um, for a hundred and three thousand seven hundred eighty-one, and the reply was that it was our August Cal Card. What's the Cal Card?
So Cal Cards are all of the district issued credit cards, and so our vendor that we pay is US Bank, which is, yeah, which is just our collaboration of all of our bills for all of our Cal Cards for that particular month.
Got it, thank you. I just, I didn't know what it was, so I just needed more information. Yeah. It's not mine, but, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, oh.
Just real quick, I don't know if I want to point this out, but I, just randomly, I was going down that list and I saw our bo, a new board member, Kane Belante, on there for two thousand two hundred forty dollars. I just want to get an idea of why, what is this, essentially?
Isn't that a student board member?
Yeah, his name is on here.
So, um, I can a, answer that. Oftentimes, um, VACE students, um, if they get, uh, like, a, if they get a scholarship after they've paid, then they'll get money back from us, like, for their program, so.
So the scholarship would be for an X amount, and then we'd give the residual? Okay, okay. It was just random, I probably shouldn't have brought it up, but yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the question on D one is answered as well?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen D two.
Okay, so one of my questions on this one was, and it was answered in email, but just for transparency, um, I wanted to be sure that VACE was being included in our new phone system.
Yes, so the, the description on this was incorrect. The Wave, VACE Compuwave six thousand five hundred fifty-four phone license, um, it's for renewal for site switches and Wi-Fi, specifically called down to VACE to figure out why it's, like, what is this? They are part, still part of getting the new phone system, so this expense is not related to that, yeah.
Good, I just wanted to make sure that they were included. And then, um, I just had some general questions, I think maybe we can just get some more feedback on it sometime, but I've noticed that, um, you know, we have, like, charges for Foothill, so for example, like, they go to the Y for PE, and we pay the Y for that. There was, on this one in particular, there was a City of Ventura for twenty-seven thousand for facilities use for the aquatic, um, center. Like, I understand what that is. Can we get an idea of how many contact, contracts we're paying for Foothill, for, like, all of their contracted, especially like, they're all the contracted sports and everything?
We, we have that.
Yes.
We could provide that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that to you, absolutely.
I just would like to wrap my brain around it.
Any other questions on D two? Okay, so now we would be entertaining a motion only for fifteen C one, fifteen C two, fifteen D one, and fifteen D two.
I will move approval.
I will second.
Thank you, trust, um, sorry, vote as follows, trustee Fredericks.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
And trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Okay, now we're to board reports.
Measure E met, we already went over that when we talked about the, um, new members of the committee.
Any other board reports? Okay, then that's over, uh, next is, or?
Okay, I found it. Um, so James and I, and Dr. Castro went to the, um, City Ventura College, uh, VUSD Liaison Committee, um, meeting, and, um, I wanted to share with everyone, um, uh, Dr. Habib gave us some great statistics and info on, uh, Ventura College. So I, I'll show it to you now, but then I was gonna give them to Amy and ask her to, um, make photocopies. Sorry, Amy, I meant to give these to you before, but I totally forgot. But in particular, she shared with us dual enrollment headcount by high school and how that's changed, um, over the last few years. And it's really good information. She also shared, um, degree completion rates for our students, um, so we could see how many of our high school graduates, um, are completing their programs at Ventura College and over how many years, um, and then whether or not they're transferring and that sort of stuff. It's really, really helpful information, so, um, I wanted to share that with all of you. And then, uh, we also, uh, talked a little bit about their housing project. So they have sixty-two million dollars in state funds to build their, um, student housing on campus, which they are projecting will be between two hundred and ninety and three hundred and twenty beds, um, which would be a really fantastic, um, change for Ventura College students. So that was great. Um, and then moving on, um, last week, I attended the PAC meeting.
Oh, I, I have a comment about the Ventura College Liaison. They're doing an amazing job because they actually now entertain sixth graders. So my daughter just went to sixth grade, and she came home explaining to me how she can actually forego two years of her college that she can do dual enrollment while she's going to high school. So they have started in the sixth grade, and I had my sixth grader come tell me what she's gonna do and what she's capable of, and she was very excited about how many gifts they gave out, so, I mean, they really, yeah. No, it wasn't any food, but it was just, you know, a matter of fact, I have this, got this from her, um, that goes on the back of your phone, that says Ventura College, uh, on my phone. So they gave a lot of useful, like, a lot of useful thing, but to have a sixth grader come home and explain to me how she's gonna do dual enrollment, um, when she's in high school, so she can get part of her college done, I thought was, uh, super, super impressive.
And we learned, um, that Ventura College now offers two baccalaureate programs, um, so, which is amazing. One of them, uh, their program in, uh, EV, um, auto mechanic, uh, it was, you know, fantastic, great opportunities for our kids, so, so that was really fantastic. Uh, anyway, back to the PAC meeting, uh, last Friday, um, Dr. Castro, Dr. Bayless, and Neil did a great job of presenting on our special ed inclusion efforts at the TKK and first grade. And I thought actually some of the information that you shared was really new for me, um, like, the fact that we only have seven students who are, like, those true inclusion students. So, uh, you know, when we have that conversation, oftentimes it sounds like we're, it's this huge effort, right? And it, not that it isn't a big effort, but really the number of kids, most of those kids would be in those classrooms anyway. It's, the, the difference is that there are seven that we are intentionally making space for. So it was, um, very helpful, and I thought the parents really appreciated the information as well. And so, yeah, that was, that was fantastic.
Wasn't the other BA, uh, was it bio manufacturing? Something of that nature? I don't, do you, you remember? I just can't remember.
I only remember the EV maintenance one, but I, I, we didn't get, there is a second one, we didn't spend time talking about it, so I apologize.
Right, yeah. So, uh, it, along with the, uh, the meeting at Ventura College, I went to the Westside Community Council and just kind of, you know, went over the, uh, Measure E, uh, and took questions, kind of spoke there, and, uh, how the Westside is gonna be, uh, receiving a lot of Measure E, uh, building and funds, and, um, and, uh, and I believe, Sabrina, we addressed some other, uh, upcoming issues that are on the horizon, uh, concerning our budget and school consolidation. So we are, uh, we're out there, we're, we're, we're working the community and letting the community know that this is what we're doing, and here's what you're getting from the school district.
If we're doing community councils, I also attended the college area community council, and similarly, you know, just put on everyone's radar that we will be having, you know, ongoing budget meetings as well as, um, the potential, um, for school consolidations, and that people should remain engaged and, um, participate in those conversations. They'll be important. I also shared the, um, board survey, so.
And I went to the Montavo Community Council meeting, where we talked about the new inclusive playgrounds, uh, which was well-received, and also the school consolidation as well. Coming events?
All right, you have it there on the screen. Back-to-school nights, uh, are, we are in the, the middle of that. They go until the end of September. AAPC, um, coming up, I think that is tomorrow night. So a couple of us are gonna try and balance, uh, being at back-to-school nights and potentially coming in just to, um, to greet the group. Teacher of the Month celebration, first one of the year kicking off at Will Rogers on the eighteenth. D-LAC also on the eighteenth, CDAC, um, the twenty-sixth pack, as was just mentioned, our next meeting is coming up on the third. And then, uh, since we were just talking about Ventura College, our joint, uh, state of education event with Ventura College is taking place on the twenty-second, um, and you have that there, looking forward to that.
Future board items?
I have two items that I wanted to, um, highlight, um, and they're really just getting kind of an update. And I don't know if they're already on your calendar for the circle back, uh, what I'm gonna call the Mr. Peterson circle back. But, uh, the million dollars in site funds, um, that we allocated, I wanted to find out how much of that has been allocated and what it's been allocated for. Um, and then the second thing is, um, the healthy campus implementation in terms of, what's the response rate right now from families to, to share their information? I know it's being pitched at our back-to-school nights, um, but because our financial plan hinges on participation, kind of want to make sure where we're at on that.
Okay, thank you. We'll, uh, incorporate those. Both of these are budget-related issues, and one of the things I heard earlier was, uh, trying to, um, find a place for a special board meeting prior to our first interim. Uh, so we'll come back, we'll bring all of these things together, they all sound budget-related.
Any general board comments?
Uh, just before, sorry, President Peterson, before we move on from fu, future board items, uh, I just wanted to, I confirmed. I just wanted to, I confirmed with Ryan Hughes about the bond implementation plan update, he'll be ready for that on October fourteenth as well.
Any general board comments or superintendent comments? I just had, go ahead.
I was just going to say, how much I've loved the back-to-school nights. I've been able to visit, I think, five campuses so far, and it is just so, I mean, I did back-to-school night at my own school, but it's really fun seeing it from the other perspective of being a trustee and being able to see all the families so excited and so engaged, and it has just been absolutely heartwarming, and I've just really appreciated all the warm welcomes on all the campuses and teachers with these amazing classrooms, and just, you know, all the staff just in full gear in order to make it, it's just such a phenomenal experience for families. Just thank you.
Well, I was going to say something super similar, so, but yes, the back-to-school nights are really fun, and it's really, there's really good energy right now. I mean, I really just feel like when we're on campuses, like our staff is just amazing, and the kids seem like they're, you know, picking up on that energy, so just grateful to have people who care about what they do for, you know, for their living and who bring a lot of heart to the work, and it shows.
Ditto, and, you know, I really appreciate the teachers and staff for really going out there and really making these back-to-school nights amazing. I've, I've heard nothing but positive feedback about these events, and also about the school year, it seems like the school year is going really well, I'll start off, hearing a lot of positive comments from parents, of course, negative ones, but, you know, that comes with the territory, but I, I really appreciate our staff for being really welcoming for our students coming back.
So for me, this is a compliment for exec cabinet and for the board on the diocese. You know, when I first started, a lot of people didn't talk to me and tell me anything, but now, more and more, more and more people come up to me, and it was a compliment on our engagement with each other. So more, more than seven people actually have said the same comment about that it seems like we're more engaged with each other, that we're having better conversations with each other, that they understand the board meetings better and our processes and what we're doing. So I thought that was a great compliment, and for some, it came within one month, like the seven people, so whatever we're doing, we continue to do it, and that's like, you know, that's feedback that you, that you want to hear, because I don't know if the numbers, I have no idea how many people watch the board meetings, so, but if, 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 if seven people gave us a compliment, that might be a big percentage of, of how many people watch.
We get hundreds, but it's spaced out over time, but it honestly depends on the topic.
So I took that as a huge compliment, and so I just wanted to, to the share, because you know, I always say, how many people said it? So just so you said, more than seven people said it, so that's a big, that's a big percentage of people that said that we're doing a great job, so obviously I appreciate that of being a president of the board, so made me smile.
I'll just echo the board's comments. We had our, our recent principals meeting, and I just extended that general appreciation to the principals and their staffs, because people are, I think we always do it, but to see when you're on the site, how people are taking that extra minute to make that eye contact, to smile, to say hello, all of those things go a long way, so thank them all.
Is there any reason to return to close session? Okay, entertaining motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, vote is follows trustee Fredericks?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
And trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Vase.